Okay, so it's 6:32 and I'm calling this meeting to order for City Council.
And Visit Bastrop met this morning and went into recess, so we're just going to reconvene.
So, a couple of quick things. Interestingly enough, some of you may or may not be aware that one of the things that we've done during the last year is met, the council has met with all of the boards and commissions, we have 13 of them, some of them, like, we didn't meet with the Ethics Commission, but we've met with Planning and Zoning, we've met with the EDC, we've met with the Cemetery Board and the Library Board, so we've met with everyone, but with you guys, those of you that are, have, keep your contract, a copy of the contract underneath your pillow at night, you know that we were contractually obligated to meet with you guys in early June. So that's the, that's the point of this meeting, and it was a way of touching base. You're a very interesting board because you guys are still in baby mode. You didn't even exist this time last year. So the very fact that you've got your bylaws, that you've had board meetings, you've made tremendous strides, and I'm sure each and every one of you that serve on Visit Bastrop realize how much the community's counting on the success of Visit Bastrop, and council is no different. There's no one more interested in you being as successful as possible than city council. So it's a, it's a partnership, but quite frankly, it's also a contractual obligation. So for us to fulfill our fiduciary responsibility to the citizens, we need to make sure that we're holding Visit Bastrop to the contract terms that you guys agreed to. The main point of, not the main point, but one of the things that we wanted to discuss tonight is to see, is there things that you're needing from the city, you're, you know, getting, getting your feet underneath you, you've been around for a few months, are there things that we need to do better? Looking forward, and as you look out to the next year, how can we work together better? Is there anything that you need? Kind of a state of where are we? You're gonna get lots of questions, and that's a great thing, but I want you to know that it's coming from the fact that it's, it's interest in making sure that we're all on the same page and that the, that we're adhering to the contract. That's an important thing for all of us. It's how you guys know how to hold yourselves accountable, it's how the city's able to explain to citizens, you guys have the largest budget of any other, of any board, that the city's saying, okay, here's a big ol' hunk of cash and we're needing you guys to get some things done. So, the whole point of this, you'll notice nothing is on here for action, nobody's gonna be voting, we're not taking any official actions, it's a, it's a working session, we're all in this together, we all want what's best for Bastrop together, and we're just really looking forward to the meeting. What we've done in our other joint sessions, because some of you are, we, we all know each other, but some of you are a little bit new and maybe you're in a slightly different role, so we'd like to go around the room and just say your name, and for Visit Bastrop, if you would also please tell us what area you are representing on the board. It would just, it's a good touch base for all of us. And, uh, she's reminding me. This room is not really set up for these kind of meetings. It's, it's a stress to our, our media team, as you can tell by the wires on the floor. If, when you're speaking, please turn the mics off when you are not speaking. When you're speaking, if you slide it towards you, that's on, and you have to really get up close, because if you're far away, no one can hear you, we can't hear you in the room, and especially the folks that are trying to watch from home cannot hear you. So you, you have to get obnoxiously close to the microphone. So with that, Ms. O'Brien, would you introduce yourself and we'll go around the room?
Yes, Sarah O'Brien with the City of Bastrop, and I'm also the city liaison on the Visit Bastrop Board of Directors.
Vina Tewani, General Manager at the Best Western Bastrop, member on the board of representing all the hotels in Bastrop.
Becky Womble with the Bastrop Chamber of Commerce, I'm an ex-officio member.
Kevin Plunkett, I'm representing Restaurants.
I'm Sean Anthia Pletch, and I'm at-large candidate in the, on the board.
Hello, I'm Cindy Gensel, I'm Chair of the Bastrop County Historical Commission, and I represent history.
I'm Tom Scott, resident of Bastrop and an at-large member of the board.
I'm Brenda Abbott, I own Brenda Abbott Floral Design, and I represent special events and venues for Visit Bastrop.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, City Manager. Dale Lockett, I'm President of Visit Bastrop, Ex-officio Officer.
Clint Howard, I own Deep in the Heart Art Foundry, and I represent the arts.
Connie Schrader, I'm the Mayor.
Lowell Nelson, Mayor Pro temp.
I'm Josella Rogers, on the council, and own the Shurshak.
Bill Peterson, City Council, Place One.
Bill Ennis, City Council, Place Four.
Lendaville, City Manager.
Tracy Waldron, CFO.
Deborah Jones, City Council, Place Five. That's what we call just-in-time delivery. Okay, so thank you guys so much. The first item on the agenda is review the city's contract with Visit Bastrop dated September 12, 2017 regarding scope of services, scope of service and deliverables, along with purpose of annual workshop, dialogue about performance, establish future goals and objectives, and other topics that may be relevant to the components of the contract in early June of each year.
All right, Mayor and Council. I have done a much shorter version than this thick contractual agreement hitting only the high points. One of the things that's important in the contract to note is what the council's purpose of Visit Bastrop was envisioned, and that is to provide quote-unquote "brand marketing" for Bastrop as a destination, to serve as the primary brand advocate, and to better utilize existing facilities. There are several requirements that council placed in the contract of Visit Bastrop. The first is to provide global oversight of Bastrop's visitor assets and activities, to provide a level of unity and representation to maximize Bastrop's brand potential, to ensure each community asset is represented in a way that there is equal representation, and to seek input from each community asset group. The community assets from a broad perspective are arts, history, hotels, restaurant, retail, sports, outdoors, recreation, Hyatt, nightlife, entertainment, and film. And there are provisions in the contract that should there become a new community asset, that the board has the flexibility to evaluate that and add that category as a board member if needed. The contract's scope of services include attracting leisure visitors to the city and its vicinity, to attract and secure meetings, events, retreats, and conventions to the city and its vicinity, to serve as a liaison to local businesses, including hoteliers, restaurateurs, and other similar entities, also to create an annual business plan to achieve the scope of services, to utilize research reports on economic trends, growth sectors, and regional competitive strengths and weaknesses, as is customary in a destination marketing organization industry, is specified in the business plan, to provide marketing and imaging campaigns for the city's tourism and convention industry, also as specified in the business plan, to inform and partner with the city regarding high-profile or significant recruitment and attraction efforts, to provide inappropriate detail, reports listing Visit Bastrop's expenditures made with HOT, and that's Hotel Occupancy Tax, Visit Bastrop's progress in performing the services and the implementation of the business plan, to provide expertise in destination management in conjunction with the City of Bastrop, to leverage available resources such as our community assets and activities, to maximize opportunities to attract visitors to Bastrop, both leisure and business, recognizing the critical role that tourism plays in Bastrop's economy, both in hotel occupancy tax as well as sales tax revenue. There is a requirement for the Visit Bastrop to build a business plan and proposed budget in appropriate detail as to how funding provided by the city will be spent, and that has to be presented before September 1st. It has to be publicly presented at the second council meeting in September, and then incorporate into the city's contract upon approval by the Visit Bastrop Board. And so, once the Visit Bastrop Board approves the business plan, that automatically becomes an addendum to the existing contract. The business plan shall establish performance targets to evaluate the performance of the business plan, and it shall include revenue enhancements that create potential funding sources of additional non-hotel occupancy tax revenues. From a reporting requirement standpoint, the contract requires that Visit Bastrop provide in appropriate detail its progress in implementing the business plan, including both monthly and annual written reports, similar to the Albuquerque, New Mexico report, that set the tone for that conversation with council, and serves as Exhibit C of the existing contract, that there will be monthly presentations at a regularly scheduled council meeting that addresses this contract's scope of service, and to maintain reasonable levels of communication with the city manager, the finance director, and other designated departments to ensure coordination of Visit Bastrop's effort to implement the business plan. As the mayor said, the contract does require that the Board of Directors participate in an annual workshop between the City Council and Visit Bastrop Board of Directors to have an opportunity to dialogue about performance, establish future goals and objectives, and other topics that may be relevant to the components of this contract in early June of each year, which is the exact language that the mayor read, which is what formulated the agenda item for this particular discussion. Visit Bastrop's contract term is for five years. It started October 1st of 2017 and ends September 30th, 2022. The contract speaks to the amount of funding that Visit Bastrop will receive, and the organization will receive 50% of the net hotel occupancy tax revenue collected, which is defined as HOT revenue minus the provision of payment for satisfying the city's debt that's been secured by hotel occupancy tax, and in fiscal year 2018, that funding was $1,441,000. And that concludes my presentation, Mayor.
So, I, hopefully everybody's familiar. Is anybody looking at something that they haven't already seen, that's, we're all on the same page?
Well, it's just the category of film is new to us, and I was wondering, who is that representative?
I agree that that's a, that's a, a category that we're unaware of. I'm not sure, I was just looking through, do you know where that's actually stated in the contract?
Um, I sure do. It is in the whereas statements on Page One that were listed. Film was included because we get a lot of commercials and filming opportunities in the community, and so council did not want that to be left out as an opportunity to be included in community assets.
I think that that's an unfilled position based on nobody, nobody representing that currently. So I, I, I think, I think that's what happened, is that we had no one to represent that specific field come forward, so it's still an open seat.
Okay, so with that, it says to talk about the performance and establish future goals, so this quick review of the contract, I think the thing to do is to let you guys make your presentation and then we'll go through discussion then. Is that...
Yes, I think Mr. Lockett is gonna lead off with 2B, isn't that correct? And I think that covers kind of y'all's progress, and then at that point in time, that might be appropriate.
Okay. So we're moving on to Agenda Item 2B, for those of you at home. Hold discussion regarding fiscal year 2018 contract performance, establish future goals and objectives for fiscal year 2019 and beyond, provide update on current Visit Bastrop activities such as the hiring process for a new executive director, the branding initiative, adoption of a strategic plan, and other organizational items. Mr. Lockett?
Thank you very much. Before we can go to the first slide and we'll see, yep, that's what I have. So, the start date again was October 1st of 2017, and in order to begin the process of delivering the scope of services, which is Section 2.2 A through F, first of all, we had to become organizationally built and structured, and involve the following efforts. Basically, over the first two months, we put together a structure that incorporated Visit Bastrop and established our not-for-profit status as a legal entity. We converted a startup board to a full board of directors representing contractually required industry segments. We adopted a vision and mission statement and developed the fiscal year 2018 Sales and Marketing Business Plan. We submitted our first annual budget to the board for approval. We hired staff and set up offices. And all of that was done in partnership and a lot of help with the city finance office, the city manager, and Sarah O'Brien as liaison with the city to help us get started. Obviously, we were able to expedite that because there was office facilitation, shared office space with Main Street, and that helped us get up, we didn't have to go out and look for offices and get established. Also, we were able to tie in to the information technology infrastructure, which helped tremendously. We also hired CFO by design to handle our finances, and we set our financial policies, procedures, and controls. We formed board subcommittees, the Executive Committee, the Finance Committee, Board Nominating Committee, and Marketing Committee, and they have been meeting. We opened our bank account, and we also set up a bill processing system with a series of checks and balances based on fiduciary policies and procedures. We secured the Bastrop, VisitBastrop.com URL. We hired a third-party developer called Simple View to develop a robust visitor-centric website with a calendar of events that ranked high on the search engines right at the start, along with support for stakeholders and sales efforts. And we pre-established, or reestablished membership relationship, pardon me, with proof advertising to obtain ownership of all previous Bastrop Marketing Corporation assets, and to focus proof on development of advertising campaigns for selected upcoming events. So soon after formation, the City of Bastrop and the DMO Board adopted documents relevant to the structure of the organization, outlining the terms and responsibilities between the DMO and the City of Bastrop, our board composition, strategic planning, marketing objectives, among others. So we have in place a destination marketing services agreement between the city that the city manager went over a brief segment of, an agreement for provision of administrative and shared services between the City of Bastrop and Bastrop Destination Marketing Organization. We adopted and approved our bylaws and became a Texas not-for-profit corporation. We also have registered as a 501(c)(6), and we started development of our 2018 strategic plan for the board. That has been delayed, and I'll pause for a moment. I think everyone is aware that my term of engagement ends in September, and that the board is actively engaged in finding a replacement for me. It is the, the belief of the board, the focus of the board to reengage on a strategic plan once my replacement has been here. So that individual, he or she, will be able to have a direct influence into working with that and own that strategic plan. So that's why that has been put on hold. And then, we developed a Sales and Marketing Business Plan for fiscal year 2018. Under 2.2, scope of services overview, we have been focused on setting baselines for our marketing efforts. Upon formation and staffing, the DMO immediately began marketing upcoming events and building an inventory of photography and data to support ongoing promotions. We also built our online presence, and this has been impacting our scope of services deliverables. So as you may remember, immediately after we started our formation, we had one of our major events, which we worked together with the city to identify those events that were happening that had not really been marketed well in the past, but had the potential because of their organization structure and the design of those events to drive out-of-town visitation to the destination. One of the first that was identified was the Heroes and Hot Rods Car Show, and we put together a very aggressive marketing campaign for them, billboards, print ads, AAA Texas Magazine, Texas Highway Magazine, Targeted Radio, which was in the Houston and Austin market, and tried to drive additional car registration, which was achieved. It's the highest number of cars that were registered to show, as well as a fairly significant amount of foot traffic on the streets of Bastrop. We also followed that up with the Lost Pines Celebration, which we also promoted with billboards. We added television coverage, which we appreciate the mayor participating with. We did a media buy with Kview and did a live broadcast out of the Hyatt Lost Pines Resort, featuring the Bastrop Lost Pines Christmas Celebration. So we started out fairly quickly for such a brand-new organization, doing event marketing, and that was a strategic decision by the Board of Directors in sitting with the, the board to talk about a brand campaign versus event marketing. And the decision was made that in order to try to provide some impact immediately, we would start focusing on event marketing and allow some time for the brand process to develop. So some of the things that were also included was the Downtown Ugly Sweater Pub Crawl and Cookie Crawl, the Small Business Revolution, which wasn't on our radar, nor was it on your radar until it kind of invaded us. So we joined with the city, tremendous national media exposure for this destination, and tremendous credit to the city for all the effort, starting from the leadership with the mayor, through the city manager, and of course Sarah and the chamber. Everybody was involved and engaged with that, and we tried to do our part. We also tried to really leverage the relationship with Tough Mudder, which just finished, and we partnered with Bastrop County to promote the destination to over 8,000 participants and spectators. We had a increased presence on the Tough Mudder website, this time representing our hotels, which had not been represented before, to help try to drive some additional attendance. And then we also traveled, partnered with the county with Travel and Tourism Week. The effort to reach some of the scope of services, one of the elements is to try to help induce new events to come into Bastrop that will drive new incremental traffic into the destination. And in that focus, we decided to partner with Texas Music Magazine to create our first Bastrop Music Festival, 30 bands playing over four days and 40 performances. We promoted the inaugural event through billboards, radio, gas pump ads, postcards, print ads, in the San Antonio Magazine, the Austin Monthly Magazine, and Texas Music Magazine, along with signs, banners, social media exposure, press releases, media advisors, mass communications, and general word of mouth. We had signs and banners placed on Main Street and Chestnut, as well as with the Chamber of Commerce, Museum, and Visitor Centers, and the Abri Gallery for exposure. And we also did a ticket giveaway marketing campaign to drive demand and interest in what we were doing. And we provided staff support on-site during the music festival. And finally, what's coming up, we're very excited about what the chamber is doing in terms of the Patriotic Festival. Becky and her team have stepped up to the plate, and they've added a lot of very unique elements that we've been helping to raise the awareness. So we're partnering with the chamber, and we're doing the gas pump toppers, social media exposure, press releases, advertising, and billboards. Visitor Centers, we have been working in coordination with a visitor center. We've implemented a visitor tracking tool at the visitor center to help give us better database information about where the visitor's coming from, what demographic, what's geographic, and what their interests are in that. The next stage for the visitor center is a partnership with Visit Bastrop and the visitor center in terms of training, and trying to help our volunteers who are handling the visitors, help them focus on extend stay and repeat visitation. So that's next on, on the list to do. Some of the other things, we've just been involved as much as we possibly can in the Community Partners Monthly Meetings, as well as working with the Economic Development Corporation, and focusing on convention sales, and looking at our role in terms of trying to drive, drive lead generation for the convention center, as well as for our hotels in Bastrop, but especially for the Hyatt Hotel. As I think this council is aware, a significant portion of our hotel occupancy taxes are generated by the Hyatt as they are in our extraterritorial jurisdiction, and so it's very important that we partner with the Hyatt, and that's why they have a special board seat on the board to keep that focus and the emphasis and the value that we have in terms of our role. We have had some success, but we are in a, a bit of a reset in terms of what we're doing in terms of group meetings. In fact, today's board meeting, we had a pretty good discussion regarding that, and we have reset our relationship with the Hyatt. They are in a little bit different partner relationship with us, and will be attending several trade shows with their staff, selling their property, that we facilitated that process to happen for them. So we've actually helped them extend their reach and extend their output on that. We've met with our local hotels to try to talk about a chronic challenge between us leveraging our convention center for meetings, and the need to have a room block in order to do that. And it, it, there's no solution right now that we've come to. The model of our hotels is they're running as limited service properties, meaning they don't have food and beverage capability, and while there are some meeting space capabilities for them, that's not their primary focus. They have a different focus for the customer and the client, pardon me, coming into the community. So we're in dialogue. It was mentioned that maybe the group tour industry might be a, a better focus for us to look at, meaning motor coach operators coming through and into the area for the assets of the, of the greater region to look at that. I know Clint, you've had some motor coaches come into your place in that regard, so we're gonna be taking a look at, at, at that market segment on it. So it is something that I think my replacement will be able to get his or hands, his or her hands into in terms of the data that we've done, and the, and the success or the lack of success that we've experienced in the conventions and meeting side of our operation. The next slide, it just talks about our social media, and our website, Facebook, Instagram, Twitter, and what this simply represents is that today, in today's technology environment, we have a tool that wasn't available 10, 15 years ago, which enables us to leverage the desirability of our destination through leveraging the social media. Probably the most important investment that we've made to this point is our website. Our website, and when we get into our report and how to read our report, we'll go into more detail about how the website is performing, but basically against national averages, our website is outperforming in regards of destination, demand, and traffic to the website on a national average. So we're very pleased, that was not inexpensive to do, it was a significant investment by the Board of Directors to go with a very robust system that also provides us more than just a website, it also is our customer relationship database to provide our tools for the technology side, and it also enables us to have direct consumer input, or stake, pardon me, shareholder and stakeholder input into calendar events and into their own listings. So we're just now starting to really hit some of the highlights of what our website can really do for the destination. The next slide will show some of our general promotions. I think one of the things we recognize is that outdoor recreation has a tremendous opportunity in our community, and having river experiences that are just accessible off Main Street, and the setting that we have is something that needs to be leveraged. We've been working very aggressively in trying to help maximize that. We've been working very aggressively in trying to help maximize that. We also have some good golf in our region, and of course, not to be lost is our Lost Pines State Park. That, in the early days of Bastrop being a destination, that was our attractor. That was the core reason why people came to our destination, and it still is an extremely important identity for this destination, though it has been challenged with the disasters that have happened. It is in a regrowth and resurgence, and there's some opportunity to leverage with that. It is a perfect open lab, if you will, in terms of rebirth and regrowth that's happening. So we're continuing to keep the Lost Pines State Park high on our list. But as you know, the Bastrop Lake came on strong as an attractor, adding the Heroes Water Park, so that's a nice new addition. McKinney's Roughs facility, run by LCRAs, has really been stepping up. Their zip lines are a new, great, added attractor to come into our region, as well as they're now just offering ATV trails that are coming in and off-road biking. So they're continually to improve their product and we're working very strongly to help partner with them. And obviously, the Hyatt Regency in terms of their activities, the horseback riding, the shooting, river activity, golf spa opportunities. And something that I think makes us really unique in our region, as well as in the United States, is the copper shot distillery, the picking on the porch, and the other at-home or down-home or call-it-home experiences that we can provide at a higher level and a better visitor experience in the destination. I'm going to take a breath.
Okay, good, because I think you're according, as I'm looking at the packet, you're about to go to 2.3.
Yes.
And so, Council, that was quite a bit, and that's covering pages, the end of, the bottom of Page Two and Page Three of the contract, and I just wanted to open it up and see if Council had any general questions. Councilmember Ennis, looks like you're going for a mic.
Mr. Lockett, so I, from what you said, I hope I'm understanding this right. The non-Hyatt properties have such a high occupancy rate due to what we used to call transient business, that they're not interested in group business, right?
That's part of it, and I might defer to Vina as our hotel representative. I think that what we've experienced is the business model for our property. We are so influenced by compression out of Austin, when Cota has an event, when South by Southwest hits, and other activities, and also some of the FEMA impact in the past. It's been hard for our hotels, when we book a group, it's a year or two or three years out, and it's been hard for our hotels to be willing to commit to a rate and a block of rooms for that far out. And it's just the reality of, they're not meeting hotels. They have a different setup. Vina, is that, am I fairly close?
Well, that's a wonderful, that's a wonderful position to be in. I don't want to preempt what you're going to say, but I have another question when you threw.
Do you agree with what I've said?
Yes, I do agree with what Dale said, and it's been hard, you know, to commit, but we are trying. But it's hard to get all the hotels at the same time to commit.
Well, I understand the position you're in. I used to be in the hotel industry, so I understand. Is there, is there an avenue for the DMO to help the hotels outside of those limitations?
I think the answer is yes, but it's going to be a different model than a traditional DMO model. Normally, what your destination marketing organization will do on meeting and group business is do what the hotels by themselves cannot or will not do. And so when you look at a similar destination marketing organization across not only Texas, but the United States, you'll see them trying, having a major focus and budget support to go after citywide conventions, to fill multiple hotels, to aggregate with, on behalf, as an advocate for the meeting planner, to work the space requirements, the rate requirements, with the convention center needs, and the food and beverage needs, and the transportation needs. That's what our expertise can and should be, and the hotels don't have the staff or the energy to be able to do that, because they're working to fill their own hotels. Well, in our case, that model breaks apart for us, so we're kind of regrouping a little bit. We did not know that going in, and that's something I think that's really important, is that we have tested the traditional model, which is for us to aggregate the room block that we have here, which if we had 100% of the rooms in our Bastrop hotels, it would be around 490 rooms. Well, you never, as you know, you never get 100%. So as we work down that, we found that we couldn't, as Vina just said, we couldn't get a large enough block consistently to be able to offer for groups that would use the convention center. So the way that we can do it, I initiated some talks with other GMs of the properties, and one suggestion has come up, the group tour, the motor coach business, to take a look into that and see. They don't book a year out. They will book a shorter window of time to do that, but also to try to get a picture of the need dates. When are they liked in terms of occupancy forecast six months out, and see what we can do to help stimulate some business that might be going to Georgetown that's not using a large meeting space, but using, looking for a good cost-effective alternative. And especially when you're looking at either the airport hotel market, we are a great cost comparative opportunity, and especially for a downtown Austin area. But it's just, we have to, we have to be very careful about who we choose to try to compete with when we go into that.
Well, I don't ask questions to put you on the spot. I just want Council to understand what you're up against.
No, it's a very good question.
Appreciate it.
And quite frankly, we didn't know the answer going in. We had to, we had to try a model, and we've tried that.
Great, thanks.
Council, any other questions? Councilmember Jones?
I was just going to make the comment based on the questions that Councilmember Ennis asked. If the Visit Bastrop looks at several other options, and it ends up not being an appropriate scope of service, then we will need to amend the contract and remove that responsibility, because it very clearly states the expectations and not to set future boards and staff up, that once that information is gathered, I would suggest a more formal presentation, because not only educating the council, but the community on why the scope of service for Visit Bastrop has changed, so that in future years, we don't continually ask, well, how come you're not doing this, when that's not an option.
Thank you. Does that make sense, Dale?
Yes, perfect sense, yes.
Clint, you follow it? Okay. Council, any other questions? Councilmember Jones?
So, a couple of things. One is, because the hotels haven't really worked out the way that I guess we thought going into it, I mean, is there more interest? Let me back up. Every time I ask about events, I'm always told that the hotels are full. So on the other side of that, we've had studies done where someone, or different groups have come in and said that it's not viable for us to have a hotel by the convention, which to me makes a lot of sense. So I mean, has that position changed?
Well, I do think it's not accurate to say our hotels are full. We're running a good average occupancy, but it could be better. So there is, the challenge, going from zero to 25%, if you're not running 25%, you're not in business. So going from 25 to 50 is pretty easy. Going from 50 to about 60 is a little bit harder. Once you get above 60% occupancy, so Vina, you've got 110 rooms?
No, we have 60 rooms at our property.
Yes. So once she's at about 65%, filling those last rooms, their model is that supply and demand comes into place, and they use those last rooms as their revenue opportunity, if you will, in many cases. Or they can use it as an opportunity to really induce, to get above that. But it's just, it's incrementally harder once you get up into 65, 70% occupancy.
So what is the occupancy now?
The occupancy, our year-to-date, is at 50%.
I guess I'm just, and we don't have to necessarily, I just don't understand what the problem is with trying to get people to book lots of rooms if people, I mean, if we're running 50% on occupancy. I just don't understand how that is a problem.
The problem happens is when the block is requested, if we already have, you know, the rooms booked, then we cannot offer the block. It is...
Sean, I need you to talk into a mic.
They have an opportunity to book a convention, but it's during Cota. These people's rooms, they already know they're going to be full. So a lot of the opportunities that were initially presented, correct me if I'm wrong, targeted times that the hoteliers felt like they didn't have to offer discounts and reserves because they were going to be full anyway. Is that right? Did I say that right?
Maybe, I'd just like to try to clarify maybe a little bit if I can. So you've got all these hotels in town, and we're trying to block out rooms for a convention, and the convention needs 150 rooms, and the five, six hotels are only willing to give us 10 rooms each. So they block us 50 rooms. That's not enough to fill the convention, so we can't sell it. And their capacity and their business model is not the sale of food, it's not the conventions, it's the way their business models are set up. But if we had a hotel over here by the convention center, that hotel would probably be great to book the conventions for, but then it would be empty in between every convention, because it would be built to service the needs of a convention, and to have the food and beverage part, and to be right here within walking distance. So you've got, you've got two completely different middle, business models that don't necessarily mesh. So I think you could have both scenarios, where it may or may not make sense to have a hotel down here, but it's not going to necessarily be full, except when conventions are actually happening. And then the other side is the way the current hotels are set up and the way they're going, they're not wanting to block out those chunks of rooms a year and a half in advance, and the ones that they would be willing don't add up to enough for the capacity that the convention center could actually hold. So we're in a conundrum there, because we don't have enough hotels for the number of rooms each of them would be willing to give us. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does. And I mean, I understand, you know, the booking over 65%, but I mean, it doesn't help us, you know, doesn't help us get to where we're going, and what do other towns do about that? Because it's obviously not just you need to Bastrop. But another question I have is that, I know that one thing that we've talked about doing, it just seems two things. One is that there are people that just come to visit Bastrop. So I mean, I don't know that I agree or disagree that that hotel would be empty when there's not conventions. It just seems like there would be people that would want to stay in town. I know that whenever we travel, we always try to book in a town where we can go and walk out into the community, you know? But then the second part is, is that what about a transit service set up to bring people on a schedule into town from the hotels at dinner or after? Is that something, I know that's something we've talked about, but is that something that y'all are working on?
Councilwoman Jones, let me go back to your first part. You asked a question, what other cities do. Most other communities have a blend and a mix of properties. They have what we have here, select service, if you will, primarily generated by transient, either transient business or transient leisure. But they also have meeting hotels. And meeting hotels work on an entirely different plan, which they get a tremendous amount of revenue through food and beverage. They're full-service restaurants, they're catering for the groups, the food and beverage, running the bars. They can, they are able to leverage, if a group says, I'm going to bring in 150 people in your hotel, and I've got a budget for $10,000 of food and beverage by, that really helps the hotel block those rooms in advance, because they know that they're getting a revenue stream enhancement on above, somebody walking in as an individual saying, I'm going to book one room, and I may or may not eat on your property or buy anything. So we are lacking in that. The proposed, the proposal for a convention center hotel makes tremendous sense in terms of the convention center. That's one of the components that's lacking from that. And you're correct, whether or not it would benefit from transient and business is up to the design and the operation of whoever comes in and what type of a hotel it is. So it does have some potential for the community, and should be definitely taken a look at, but also be very cautious about understanding, you know, the competitive nature of the industry that we're in. In broad-stroke statements, the convention industry is seriously overbuilt. There are not enough meetings to go around to fill all the convention hotels and the convention centers and the expanded convention centers. It is a very aggressive environment that hotels are fighting for and communities are fighting for. And that's why you'll see the most angst and anxiety by any community that's got a convention center is about how do we stay competitive for the future? What's the investment that we need to make to be competitive for the future? Because the product is continually improving and changing, and it's being very, very aggressive in terms of having to compete.
Well, I really appreciate you going into that detail, because that's the thing I get the most questions about, and I think we need to get, you know, if people understand why we're not doing that, I think that's really important. So anyway, my second question, which is the transit, you know, the transit system that we had talked about during for the existing hotels to camp.
Transit is important. If you would, the gold standard is to have within walking distance your restaurants, attractions, and nightlife. And so when you think about a convention destination, some hit that, and it's easy, and you can, it's called walkability, and you can identify within a four-block radius of all the nice things of your headquarter hotels or your meeting hotels that you can get to and experience. And then other cities, it's not quite as convenient and easy. So there's several ways that communities address it. One is a transit system. One example that I'm familiar with, having spent time in Arlington, Texas, is they created what's called a trolley district. They had great assets, but they were scattered in different locations throughout their community. So the hotels in that destination came together, and they created a legal trolley district, where there was a surcharge that they provided to help fund. And so we were able, at the convention center, to have the trolley run between Six Flags, the ballpark, the visitor center, and other attractors, restaurant alleyway for, so that meant when you had a convention booked, you could leave a car or not even have a car, and be able to get to all of the attractions on a regularly scheduled trolley system that was dependable and, so there's lots of ways of doing that. But the primary, the primary objective is, if you're going to be in this business, you have to address those needs and be cognizant of those challenges to move forward.
Councilmember Jones, we have visited with carts, our mass transportation. There are some challenges. One, carts needs to add a second route, and we have been talking to Dave Marsh about doing that. The challenge is, is that a lot of the times when we need that transportation, carts doesn't run. So that's why what Dale is proposing is an answer, but it goes back to, we can't support that seven days a week, so when do you do it and how do you do it? So when we get some of our other more pressing challenges addressed, then it's on our work plan, I don't know if it's next year or the next year, but it is on there to begin to address that. One of the things we have identified and we know is that the hotel occupancy tax, this isn't allowed use of that, but we've got to be able to make sure that when we make the investment, we can keep it busy, and we know how all that works. Carts would be a great way to make sure that the staff that works at the hotels that perhaps don't have a car could use that as transportation. That's something we've been talking to the Hyatt about. So there's workforce issues, there's transportation issues for our tourists, and then it's the hours that it's staffed and how many days a week. So it's complicated, there are multiple options, and we just are going to continue to study it.
Council, do you have any other questions?
My question, because I see that this is two... My question, because I see that this is two point two A through F, and when I look at the contract, um, E says to provide reports listing Bassdrop, Bassdrop, visit Bassdrop, excuse me, expenditures made with hot funds. Because one of the questions that I get all the time is, how are they spending that money? How much did they spend on the car show? How much did they spend on Lost Pines Christmas? So, um, the slides that we've gone over, I appreciate you summarizing them all together, but quite frankly, we've kind of, we, we've seen these slides a lot. I think we all know of the major events and I think that's great, but if you, and if you've prevented, if you have presented this and I have overlooked it, I apologize. But I get asked regularly, "Well, how much did they spend?" Am I alone? And I'm getting nods, yes, from other people. So it would have, um, been very helpful, and I, I promise, we do not want to be involved in every last penny. The board's responsible. Um, we'll talk in, in a minute. One of the things I noticed when I went through the, the contract was that the board members have a fiduciary responsibility and a strategic responsibility. So, promise me, I, I, I mean, I promise you, I don't wanna see every entry in the checkbook, but I'd like to know in round numbers. The car show was thirty thousand dollars, the Christmas was fifty thousand, or ten dollars or something, because it feels awkward when people ask me that question. And I, and I apologize, but I honestly have no idea.
So that is, um, probably needs more clarification. Uh, the board receives a, uh, financial report every month. And, uh, at our board meetings, it's gone through, um, we receive an update, our, our, uh, in, in terms of the expenditures for each of the entities, we have that identified. What we haven't presented, um, if, if, is the frequency to council. Do you want, I, you could have, you could ask for, by the way, if you, you, you could ask for it monthly, you could ask for it quarterly, you could ask for it annually. Uh, experience that I've had has been, uh, to provide semi-annual and annual reports, uh, financial status, uh, financial report. But, uh, the financial report is a public document, so, uh, it could be provided at any point in time.
Well, imagine this, I have an opinion, but, um, I, I, you're coming to council every month. So it seems to me, like, the car show was in November, so by the time you're presenting in late December or at the latest, the first of January, I would expect it to be like, you know, we... With the, the event happened in November, we collected all our receipts in December, it's January, by the way, the car show was sixty thousand dollars, ten thousand dollars. That, that's when I would, council, do, I, I need someone else to have an opinion.
I agree.
Can I, uh, ask a clarification? Um, so you, you're asking for event-specific in what you're describing. So are you asking for, you know, full, you know, breakdown of, of, of the expenses like we would do at a monthly level? Or do you want us to just present on an event-specific, uh, basis? Because I think clarification there, we can, we can get you what you want.
I mean, I would wanna know, like, for example, events, salaries, facilities, supplies, just a general breakdown, not details. I don't wanna know how many rooms of paper you bought, but I would just like to know, you know, how much are you sp, how many positions do you have? Even if it's just like overhead, right? Yeah, just like a general sheet of, you get quite a bit of money.
So you just, it sounds like you just want our general financials that we're reviewing each month, so we can just submit that when we come to do the report.
Yes, because, um, BDC does a very similar, they are a standalone 501(c) whatever corporation that also gets tax money. So as a part of their report, they do a general financial statement, here's how much our sales tax was, here are the projects we're funding, that kind of thing in a, in a open and transparent way.
Okay.
Hang, hang on just a second. Thank you, City Manager. Councilmember Rogers, you were wanting to make a comment.
All I was, I was just gonna wonder, because they have to do the monthly report, wouldn't that just not, you know, because I said on BDC, so I was thinking that's kind of what... At least the way I read the contract, when you're gonna come report to the city once a month, I would think that would be part of the report, because every other organization's gonna report that same way.
And, and quite frankly, from, for me, not only just the financials, but also some that, you guys have strategically said, I, I, I totally trust that you've had, you've vetted things and you've said, "All right, here's the car show. We're gonna spend X amount of dollars and these are the couple of things that we're hoping to accomplish by that." Well, I, I think council would like to know in June, this is how much we think we're gonna spend at the car show, this is what we're hoping to do on that. So that then when it happens, we underspent that, we overspent that, we made our objectives, we fell short of our obje... Some, some sort of, this is strategically how we've, our, what we're doing with one point four million dollars. And by the way, here's, here's how we've done on that. And it is not gonna be perfect. You're a brand-new organization. It's not so we can go, "Well, wait a minute, you're over by five dollars." That's not... But some sort of broad steps, it, and I guess I would be asking the board, does that, it, it, I feel like what we're asking for is covered in the contract, but I'm trying to have a conversation about, is what we're asking you making sense and do you have a problem with that? Is that fair, then, council?
If, if I may, um, I certainly respect, um, the desire. Um, I think what, what is interesting, um, is, um, the level of re, of reporting that we're doing right now. Uh, you might want to consider, um, moving to an every other month and having that financial reporting on every other month as well as the activity reporting. Uh, I think it's, it's, um, I get it, we're brand-new and I, and I certainly, uh, agreed to the process for monthly reporting. Uh, marketing efforts and I, I feel like we're getting a little redundant in some of our monthly reporting because there is, there's not some of the traction that's going on. We're looking into the future, we're, we're planning for that. So this month, as an example, in, in a January, there's not gonna be a lot of activity because there's not a lot of activity in the community that's occurring. So I, it, it is just a level of, of, of detail, um, that here, I think, uh, the need is, is for it to be at a high level. Uh, that's not, um, common in the industry. Uh, what's common in the industry is you have a board of directors that has the fiduciary responsibility. So what, since a, a, working within a budget is a work in progress, um, what a lot of communities are comfortable with is that semi-annual mid-year report. Here's where we are financially, this is what our status looks like, so that if there's any, uh, course corrections that need to be made, there's still time to be able to do that. And then at end of year, and which by the way is when your audit comes into play. So your full, um, uh, opportunity to determine whether or not the organization completed its fiduciary responsibilities is with your audited financial.
Okay, so Dale, based on that comment, it, it makes me think that I should be able to ask any one of your board members, how much did you guys spend on the car show? Can I do that?
Yes, whether or not...
Kevin, how much did y'all spend on the car show? Any, anybody, speak up if you know.
Well, I mean...
Clint, do you know? How much did we spend on the car show?
I don't know specifically. I know that it's in, uh, paperwork that I've been given and that it's, uh, you know, been documented and they hand it out. I also know that, you know, item E, uh, could be read, you know, uh, how do we know that you wanted that monthly? I mean, we can do this, this is no big deal, but it doesn't specifically say that you wanted those financials monthly and we'd be happy to do it monthly or semi-monthly.
Okay, so don't get, don't get confused, because I'm talking about E as, this is being presented to me as this is a summary of two point two A through F, and E is included in A through F. So e- even, and, and we're, the last thing we want you to do is waste money trying to make up, we're not trying to make it harder on you. But that's why, but just in this general conversation, when I'm looking at, um, you know, a, a, a full slide of here's everything about the car show and how many, that we did billboards and gas toppers, there's just a part of me going, "How much did that cost?" So I would have expected some overall number to be included.
Dale, I think, you know, the monthly financial segment that the board gets, I think is, would be sufficient for council based on what I know about you guys on a semi-annual basis. But I think what would be really helpful and what the community wants to know is, you know, right now by event, what you guys are spending on marketing when you know. And in the future, when you get the brand, is what type of overall advertising buys are you guys doing on a monthly basis when you report? Would be my suggestion.
I just wanna break, I mean, some of, you're talking about the tremendous amount of money you spent on the website, how much did it cost? You know, I just generally want to know, and it can be quarterly, you know, it doesn't have to be every month. But I mean, like, this would have been a really good opportunity to present it over.
That's kind of actually where I was going with that. I mean, we get these graphs that show, you know, all this website action, if they kinda, and quarterly is fine, because I understand we don't have anything going on in January. But it, it, you know, we spent this much, you, you, look at how much bang you got for your buck if we spent this much for that. So we can kind of compare, look at how much we're getting for that ten thousand dollars or, or, you know what I'm saying? So it's kind of, and like I said, I think quarterly might be fine, because you're right, each, you know, each reporter's almost exactly the same.
We, we pay, we pay you quarterly, so how about you report what you did with last quarter or we give you next quarter?
That, that would be fine. That's no problem. Thank you.
And I'm, I'm gonna say as a board member, I bet you if I turned to Kevin right now and said, "Um, how much did we spend on the banquet?" He's not gonna know that. I would know that as a CEO, exactly, almost the dollar, how much we spent for the banquet. So, I mean, I, I agree that when you give you some, you know, we're getting a lot of money here, so we need to be reporting on it. But I think Dale could probably rattle off some of those numbers off the top of his head. But a board member, I mean, I have an idea of how much, but I have to go back and look at some of my notes from my file from the last year, you know, and I could probably...
Becky, with all due respect, let me introduce you to my board and she'll quote it to you, so if you ever tell the mayor something, she's got an elephant memory and she'll recite it back to you and better detail than you do. So I appreciate most don't, but I do have a few that will regurgitate it, answer the question.
So one thing I, I would point out, um, is a lot of the detail that, that you're asking about, um, you know, in terms of plan, was in our budget. So our budget specified how much we were gonna spend on the website, our budget said how much we're gonna spend in marketing, our budget specified that. What you don't have and what the quarterly reporting will provide is how close did we get to that budget? And that's, so I think that's an excellent suggestion.
Right, that's exactly, I was thinking it's like, this is what the budget is and we spent fifty percent of it or we're, we're all over that. I think that'd be perfect. And we're not trying to ask you, like the mayor said, we're not trying to ask you where you spent it or how many pencils you bought. We just wanna see, we wanna be able to answer to the, the public of, they're getting all this money, where did it go? The public wants to see that.
Shaun, did you wanna say something?
I'm looking at what I got this morning at the board meeting that is the, you know, basically the year-to-date actual versus budget. We get it every month. I, I just, I assume y'all got that.
No.
We have a budget. We have Julie come in and she says, you know, for, um, for, uh, salaries and wages, how close the budget we are or not. You don't get that, Chris.
Well, and if, if you guys are reviewing that quarterly, that, that's fine.
No, they do it monthly.
And, and like, if we're giving you money quarterly, quarterly is fine, sometimes you, you, part of you guys looking at it is you may find that, that something's off or whatever. But, um, I just need you to respect the fact that we're a political body and you guys have one point four million dollars. And we're now almost into a year and citizens say, "Hey, council, you, you did visit Bassdrop." How are they, what'd they do with that one point four million? And, and it, I need to have something on my face besides, we have so much faith in the board by themselves, because that's, that's not... Council?
You're right on.
Yeah.
And I'd like to just thank y'all for this opportunity because this is exactly what this workshop is for. You know, it, it's adamantly answering a lot of questions that I've been having, you know, as chair of the board and trying to just deal with the political climate here in town and, uh, all the things that have been said and happening in the background. I've actually been very confused as to why nobody knows what's going on, uh, and it's, it's, I'm realizing right here, right now, that, that y'all don't see everything that we've been seeing. Um, and I didn't really ever put that together and I apologize, you know, my first time chairing a board. Um, but it does make sense to, to get y'all this information so that y'all can also help answer these questions. And the one thing I would like to reiterate just so that everybody remembers, uh, you know, these events are specific and, you know, I know there's a lot of, you know, what did the event bring to community? Was it successful? Was it worth it? You know, but we gotta remember, we gotta go back to, to what the board decided to do. And we decided to do event marketing because we didn't have a brand, we didn't have the, 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 the photos in place that we needed to represent Bassdrop for what it is. And so we had to, how do we market this community with the, the money you've given us and how do we market it effectively with what is at our fingertips right now? And that was event marketing. And so when we present this information about these events, it's, it's not, was the event successful in and of itself? But did the event touch, and did the marketing for that event touch enough people around the state, around the area, to continually put Bassdrop in the forefront of people's minds? And is it adding to that long-term goal that we're trying to do? And I just wanna say that.
So I, what I would, on behalf of council, and if I'm, get off base, you guys pull me back. The, the whole point of that and why we would like to see those numbers is it's not, we're gonna spend fifty thousand dollars and then we'll make up the things we think you ought to have been able to do with that fifty thousand dollars. That's part of, I believe, your strategic plan. If you decided to do event marketing, then you said, as a board, we're gonna spend fifty thousand dollars. And with that, we are planning on doing three billboards, a Facebook post, once a day. You had some measure of metric that you're doing. And so what we're looking for is, and again, I don't need the intimate details, but in general, we planned on doing these four major things. We did them, we didn't do them, we're planning on doing them next time. And this is, this is how we came up with the money that we spent. There's just, there seems to be, from, from our perspective, and it's not that we don't trust you, we just don't have, we don't have anything to look at. And so when you come, quite frankly, we come and we look at these charts and it's like, wow, that's an awesome chart. What did you hope that it was gonna look like? It, it, and I know we're gonna get to the presentations, but, but I will tell you, in general, it feels like a rearview mirror. That we're, we're getting a summary of what happened before, but I don't know if that's better than you thought it was gonna be, worse than you thought it was gonna be? What's, what's your plan going forward? That, that's the, for me, that's what I'm missing. Councilmember Jones, NS, anybody wanna comment?
And how much did it cost?
Yeah, I, I, I think that part of fiduciary and, and strategic responsibility as well as administrative responsibility is in terms of what you're spending your money on and what, what bang we got for that buck. And I think that's what I'm looking at. I, I like the pretty charts and graphs, I, I do. I mean, but it doesn't really tell me the story on what, where we're going from this point forward. I don't envy you your task in any way, shape, or form, I just think the information is so truncated that we're not getting what we need.
And we're not trying to de- define the bang. You, you guys are the experts. You, you guys say what, what you're wanting to track about that. We just wanna know, hey, how'd it go compared to that? Does that make any sense? It's not like, oh, we expect you to be able to prove X amount of hotel rooms for every thousand dollars. That we know that's not exactly how it works. So you have to help us, educate us and know what are the metrics that you've set for yourselves. Is that...
I did wanna add one thing, because I know, you know, what the mayor's asking, Vaughn, you know, how did you determine? Now, next year we'll know more because you'll have a graph to compare it to. So I just want you to know that, at least as far as my understanding is, we have an understanding, you have nothing to compare it to yet. Next year you'll be alone, now January's up this much than it was last year. So I think it'll get easier as it goes forward, you know, because right now you're comparing it to nothing.
But you did have a plan, so when you're looking in that rearview mirror, how'd you do to what you thought you were gonna do?
I, I think the word you're, we're trying, we can describe in one word, what was your target? You spent the money and you were aiming for what? And so when you come before council, this was the board target and this is how we perform. And then Dale is masterful in, in educating the whys and the wherefores. But when you're missing the target, we don't know what the educational point is.
Understood, no.
Okay, so I, you know, just to sort of recap my questions about the transit, I mean, that's something that is being thought, it's been thought about, being thought about, being looked at. The whole, the whole convention hotel, which comes up all the time, it's something that I guess we're striving towards, you know, we're just not there yet, perhaps. And, but I have, uh, another question, which is, um, do y'all at all have on your radar the rodeo arena?
Yes. Um, in fact, I'm in negotiation, contract negotiation right now with...
Oh, that's great.
With a, an event to come in in October to utilize the facility. So, uh, we're trying to leverage all the assets that, that we have here, um, and the rodeo arena is definitely one of those.
What were you getting said?
Well, when I ran into you and I was talking to you about the couple of calls I'd gotten, one of those is the ones Dale is working on now. one of those is the ones Dale is working on now. That's perfect. And so, um, it's just the, the, the arena, and you can maybe speak to this, it's in a unique situation where it can receive hot funding. So, previously, I think, uh, councilmember McInally did some work with, it was with the arena, and something else where she, pardon, when it's sports, um, what? Yes, and it was with, for the arena, and what other issue that she covered to get to make an exception for hot funding, do you remember? I don't know, it just slipped my mind. I think it, wasn't it San Marcos that she was working with, and we both got the exemption? I can't remember. But anyway, but we're in a unique situation with our arena to receive hot funds, and I just would really like to see us, I mean, we talk about that local flavor, and, you know, and that's a huge part of the local rural community, and it just, it's been hanging out there for years. This drives me crazy. I mean, and I know y'all have a lot on your plate, but I'd like to know that it was at least, you know, kind of where, when are you thinking about looking at that, or where we're going with it, and maybe you wanna talk about that a little bit, and the unique situation that exists because of previous work that was done, so.
So, it, it, I appreciate the, the question. It's not a, it's, I would encourage both council and the board to not look at it, um, look at these opportunities of whether or not it can be spent. What's the best return on investment, uh, for, uh, the community? Because we have limited amount of dollars. Um, and one of the, one of the challenges, um, again, it's, it's, it's like anything, it's not a, um, an open environment for us. The high level of competitive rodeo facilities that are in our region is exceptionally, uh, good. So, it's not like we've got something unique here, and if we just added to it, we're going to be, uh, out there in a league of our own. Um, we're gonna, what it would do is, it would put us back into competitive, uh, capability, if you will, to go against some of the others. But it would be, uh, something that you would have to analyze in terms of, is there enough of a unique product enhancement that is being considered to be worthwhile for the investment? That needs to be done on every single opportunity. We can look at, and we have, we did early on in, in our engagement. Um, youth sports is huge, uh, in terms of economic impact, as well as adult league, uh, sports. In order to do that, you have to have the venues for it. Is it worth investing for a community to have the multiplex sports bills? Those that have invested, uh, mo, many of them are getting a good return on that investment. You need to look at it in a holistic approach to determine, of all the ways that we can spend the money, what is for the best fit for Bastrop? I don't have that answer. Uh, what I do know is that the rodeo arena is definitely something that should be, uh, in consideration, and hopefully, if we're successful at bringing this, uh, event that comes in October here, we'll get some feedback about, from the actual event producer, about what enhancements may or may not be, uh, needed to keep that event, and then to grow more events.
Understand. But, I mean, just, just to be clear, I mean, I'm talking of, not, not talking about any sort of professional, but there's a circuit that already exists, and you're not competing for it, and we already have the facility, and I just think there's a real gap in understanding what we have, and how it fits into a rural setting. It's a circuit. It's not a professional competition. That's a totally different, I don't know, I would, I would really, whoever's working on that, I would really like to be involved with that, because we just, that's just ignored over there, and it's, it would be so easy to get back on the track with it. But, um, I mean, we can talk about that more later, but it, it just drives me crazy that that just sits over there.
Mayor?
Yes?
Before we leave this, uh, before we leave this slide in particular, and the discussion we were having, uh, I understand what Dale, and I think y'all reach the same conclusion of the, the logistical issues of selling the convention center, but it is an asset. It may be an underperforming one at this point, but it is an asset, and I think it ought to be kept on our agenda for promotion. And, just as we're gonna promote Lost Pine State Park, Lake of Bastrop, Pine Forest, et cetera, it's a significant, it would be a significant missing item if this body didn't have it on its plate.
I appreciate, I, I'm looking at the contract, because I thought it was a part of it. Am I looking in the wrong spot?
He was just talking about, going into that, that we just, we did, we did-
Oh, with the booking-
Yeah, booking, booking it, yeah.
I was like, wait a minute, okay.
Yeah, so that's all he was talking about, was the, uh, transition. If, if y'all decided that the booking wasn't on our plate, we wanted to keep the promotion of it on our plate.
Yes, 'cause I think that's kind of two, two different things. So, thank you, Mayor Scott.
Okay, Dale, I think you were, were, cut, you took a breath, and we interrupted, I interrupted significantly, but you've got several more slides.
I think we can go through these pretty quickly. Um, we did develop a, a, a business plan, um, that was approved, uh, by, uh, the Board of Directors and by the City Council. And it's been mentioned by several city councilors and, and by you, Mayor, uh, of the importance of establishing this first year as some baseline. So, some of that comparative analysis, uh, in the targets of, how, you know, how does your website perform, uh, year over year? We, we only got our first year in, so we'll have some of that data, uh, to be able to establish the baseline. Um, we have been, uh, presenting a monthly status report, and we've, uh, have been meeting the reporting requirements. And, again, I think we can make a corrective step and, uh, move to the financial, uh, quarterly reporting. That will solve a lot of the questions that the council has raised, um, in, in that regard. Um, we do have, uh, the council, uh, subcommittees, or not the council, but the board's subcommittees, the marketing's subcommittee, finance's subcommittee, um, coming together to help us put our performance targets, um, including revenue enhancement plans for fiscal year 2019. And I wanted to touch on that. I'm, I'm not convinced that we'll be able to achieve revenue enhancement in 2019. Um, it's, it's certainly worth to be a goal. Uh, what we're talking about there is monetization of, uh, of some of our services. And we have to be very, very careful about that. We have to have the ability, we have to determine whether or not there's enough of our stakeholders, shareholders, um, that are willing and interested in leveraging our website, if you will, to pay, to have an enhanced listing on our website, and whether or not that's a, an acceptable relationship. It is in many communities where, uh, if you're interested in providing your own marketing dollars to enhance the DMO's marketing efforts, then we provide a, uh, revenue enhancement, uh, opportunity. It's really important, so, um, having private dollars to start supplementing, uh, the public dollars is exceptionally important, uh, down the line. I don't know if it's a year one, I, I definitely know it's not a year one goal. I don't know if it's a year two, three, or four, as we go into that. Uh, so I just wanted to set the expectation that, um, it's, it's within a five-year contractual agreement, um, and, uh, it's something that I think the, the board will be looking at, especially, Brenda, the marketing committee will look at the, the, we'll, staff will put together proposals for, uh, monetization of the website and other social media and marketing campaigns, that, uh, private sector could join in with us and enhance that. Sometimes, uh, you'll take out a big newspaper ad, and you'll allow people to buy in with you, to get your reach, uh, larger. Whether or not that'll work here or not, it's untested water yet, but we'll definitely take a look at it. Uh, you know, 2.4 utilization of city-owned facilities. Um, basically, uh, we have been working with the city, uh, in that regard. Uh, I think that there, uh, to Councilor Jones' question, uh, there is a role that the board can start performing in, in terms of helping to do analysis of other assets that the city has, such as the rodeo facility, to determine whether or not it, um, could be, uh, an enhanced asset or not, provide that feedback back to the, to the City Council. Um, as far as our Board of Directors is concerned, um, with the exception of, um, noting that there should be a film representation on our board, the board is in compliance with all the, uh, industry, uh, sectors. And accreditation, uh, a reminder that this is a, a four-year effort that will begin in fiscal year 2019, uh, that will take over a period of four years to become accredited. Moving to the next one.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Uh, why does it take so long?
It's exceptionally hard to do.
Okay.
It's, it's a, it's a national accreditation program, um, and it, it, there's a lot to do on it.
Okay.
It, it took, uh, when Visit Albuquerque, it took us three years, uh, to, to get, with a large staff, to get it going. So, um, but it definitely is, uh, a, a desired, um, provides best practices, and the accreditation process is very robust.
Okay, thank you.
On that enhance, um, the revenue enhancement, I think, I, I think it's fine. I mean, you can't get blood from a turnip, but it would be noteworthy to have in the strategic plan, "These are the things we're doing this year as, as a step towards getting there." You know, because if, if there's a point, i- is it a number of followers? Is it, there's something that makes you say, "Okay, at this point, we could charge someone to be involved with us." So, so, you know, either what steps are you taking to get there, or what are the parameters that, that we would know, "Okay, well, it looks like maybe it can't be done in five years, maybe it's gonna take six or seven," or "We've made great strides in year three and flattened out," or something. But, s- you know, since it is a part of the contract, and at some point we thought we could get there, and maybe it's gonna take longer. You know, things, things change, and that's fine, but, um, I don't want it to be like, "Okay, well, we knew it was hard, so we're not working on it." If that, that's a different conversation than, "This is year one."
It's a-
You guys agree?
Yes, understood. And it's a, it's a staff function. I would rather have, with our limited staff right now, and, and we'll talk a little bit about that, our status on it, but, uh, I'd rather have them doing the marketing, instead of trying to do the revenue enhancement at this point in time. We'll be able to add that as soon as we get another staff person on board. So, we were headed down that path and, and, uh, lost that staff position, so we'll have to, uh, retool. But, and since I went there, I'll go ahead and close the, the door on that conversation. Uh, the board has decided, and I totally agree, that we will keep, uh, the, uh, open marketing position that we, uh, uh, lost, um, uh, open, and let the person that's replacing me come in and make that decision on the type of person to hire, the scope and functionality of that job, so that I'm not, um, uh, I'm, and we're too, too close to that opportunity. So, we're gonna hold that position open right now. On our forecast, um, obviously, October 1, 2018 will kick off our second fiscal year. Um, and we've got several key projects that are underway that will bridge between the two fiscal years. One is our destination brand. Uh, some of you have met with Augustine, which was hired to come in to do a destination brand. Uh, they're in town as we speak, experiencing the destination. Um, and that will enav, enable us to go into a campaign, uh, which is different from event marketing. And that's something that our marketing committee is going to get engaged with and start forecasting, which is to give us the brand standards, the brand promise, and the identity that we can say, "What makes us unique and different from all the other competitive Texas communities that are out there, that we can provide consistently to the consumer?" Uh, because the last thing we wanna do is make a brand promise that we can't, that we can't produce. Uh, strategic plan, we mentioned that. Uh, we did a reset on that with input from the city. I think we have a much better idea of the direction that we need to go for, for that. Um, we're in discussion, and that's later in the agenda, for the hot funding restructure. Uh, we mentioned hospitality training. We're sharing the costs of online customer service training with the EDC. Um, we are in, right now, a transition. We have, uh, we're, we're in a representation with Proof Advertising. As I mentioned at the outset, we continued the relationship that they had with the Bastrop Marketing Corporation, in order to obtain all the assets that, that were from that organization, which enabled us to have some photography and other, uh, visual assets to be able to work with. We have discontinued that relationship. It was a very amenable, um, uh, discontinuation of it. Uh, it only makes sense if Augustine does the work that we think that they're going to do in our brand development, that they will be the ones that will come in and do the campaign, uh, development. We've asked Augustine, uh, to help us with a Gap campaign, because basically, once the Patriotic Festival is over, we don't have other major events that we'll be able to leverage, like the Patriotic Festival, to keep that, uh, buzz going about the destination. So, we're talking about a, what we're calling a three-month Gap campaign, uh, to, uh, work with Augustine to produce for us. Um, it may be that a complete new RFP, we'll have to go out for an ad agency down the line, but that's to be developed after the brand work is, is done.
So, there, I guess, isn't August, don't, isn't that homecoming? And there's the rodeo, and you don't think that's anything to work with, after the Patriotic? I don't understand that. There's a three-month Gap. So, I mean, that's like the biggest event in the community, so, I don't understand.
The data that we have available to us, uh, shows that while it is a, a good, uh, event for the community, it's more of a community asset than it is an out-of-town attractor. I think that's one of the things that's very hard for us in, to, to be able to look at. Some things can attract, um, and other things have difficulty. So, it's all about the programming of that. It doesn't mean that we're not going to promote it. We will put very significant social media effort against it. But in terms of doing a major campaign, like we did with some of the other, uh, special events, like we're doing with Patriotic Festival, uh, the staff assessment on that is that it's not in the organizational structural level, uh, for, for that investment. Doesn't mean it won't be, but at this point in time, it didn't hit the radar screen. And the organization has to make those tough decisions. You've got limited resources to work with, and you can't, that's one word that jumped out, and I will ask that maybe this board and the council maybe reconsider that. There was a word in there that we provide equal representation. I, I would challenge that that's not in your best interest. You have, in a marketing standpoint, you have to take your best effort to, uh, be a tractor, to drive demand to the destination, and some things will not get the level, or what you would call, equal representation. And that's a tough decision for an organization to make.
Having participated in the workshop that, um, uh, chose some of the words that were included, I think the concern on the part of the city for removing that is, is that, um, there needs to be some kind of equalizer that keeps, uh, Visit Bastrop Board of Directors from being something that is politically coveted, because if Visit Bastrop chooses one over the other, and it has a negative impact to the other assets, then it becomes, uh, "Well, you gotta be on the board to get money put your way." And council was very clear that it needed to be an equalized Bastrop marketing standpoint, so that the board didn't become political for that, um, purpose. So, I appreciate your issue, but we have to remember why that word was chosen, and if it's modified, figure out a way to not create the unintended consequence that the word got put in the, in the contract to prevent. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that makes sense, but I think it's, uh, there's a clarification to that, um, in the sense that the board is, you know, equally represented, and we are, uh, making the decisions on the things that we're, we're moving forward and putting the money behind as a board, and, you know, all the board members have an opportunity to speak their case and for their different, uh, uh, represented groups. And so, in that way, we are equally represented. I think what Dale was speaking to is, uh, if we're gonna get into a situation where we're spending equal dollars for the rep, marketing of each one of those factors, then, then that not, not gonna work. So, if, we need to clarify that specifically, that's what we need to clarify.
And, and, and y'all are both saying the same thing, from the reason the words got put in the contract, is that there, if, and it happens on council, um, count, clearly, nobody in the room's confused that Councilmember Jones loves the rodeo arena. So, we talk about the rodeo arena, because Councilmember Jones is concerned about that. That's ultimately what happens to the board. And so, um, all I'm saying is, is I'm not arguing the point, but it won't be taken out. We have to just remember that, 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 that it's intended to give equal weight. So, when you take out that word, you've gotta put something back in to make sure that the weight is equal, because council was very concerned that the board not become political in the distribution of its funds, and bypass council, who is the political, that's right, political distribution, because the part of the business plan and your strategic plan is to offer that as a recommendation to your funding source, which is your council. And that way, they make sure that the politics don't get in, entered into it, which was the catalyst for the contractual wording.
Understood.
Okay, this brings up a question. So, when I think about promoting Bassdrop, so maybe this is what I'm thinking, I think about promoting what's unique to Bassdrop, not reinventing Bassdrop, and so, I guess that's my question. Do we have people that are, like, these marketing groups that you're hiring, and they're trying to dream up events to make us desirable, or are we taking what we've already done as a community? For example, you know, I'm sorry to keep bringing this up, and I, I don't mean to, but it's just, you know, the example, it's just that we used to, to have very active, you know, and it was community rural-type circuit with the rodeo, and, and it's just not happening at all anymore, and, and, to me, like, I mean, like, for the community, the, the rodeo happening in August is one of the biggest events that, that goes on for a lot of people. They don't plan vacations during that time, they want to be here, tons of people come in, and, any, but, you know, and there's just, there's other examples, and I know it just, it makes me sound really picky bringing them up, and I'm not trying to, but I just wonder if we're promoting the Bassdrop community and what has been important here versus trying to reinvent the community to make people want to come in and do what everyone else is trying to compete for.
So, that's an excellent question, counselor. Let me assure you, um, the process for effectively marketing this destination is hinged, critically hinged, on what's unique and what's authentic to Bassdrop. Not contrived, not made up, not aspirational, but what is. And that's part of the discovery that the organization is going through right now, is to be able to, to, to elevate that. What gets difficult, I think, and, and, um, it, I, I understand the, when we, as a local resident, look at things that are important to us, um, we can make a case for a lot of different things, and, uh, if, what, the challenge for your staff, if, if we have an expertise in marketing a destination, then there has to be a certain trust level that we do an evaluative process of what really will resonate to the visitor, what really, uh, is able to attract a visitor to come here versus going anyplace else. And oftentimes, that gets into a crowded and competitive field. Their, uh, rodeos are very, in Texas, are very attractive, but they're also plentiful. Every community around has got some type of local rodeo activity. So, what sets us apart and different, uh, and makes us become an attractor on that? We are engaged in that question, and we'll continue to be engaged in that question, and if we can, and oftentimes, it falls to the local structure and support, uh, the operator of it is, has got a critical role. Uh, one of the, one of the misconceptions about a DMO is, why doesn't the DMO run it? Why don't we create a rodeo and, and run it? And that's, I know you know that that's not, uh, what we should be doing, uh, but oftentimes, that is the question about, we've got this asset, so why don't you guys create something? You have to have a local passion, like, and use the car show as an example, with the Blue Flame Cruisers. They put those events together, they run them, they have the responsibility to do it. We're enhancing the marketing as a demand to drive, uh, people from out of our community to come here in that regard. I think the counselor has a question.
Okay, Dale, I'm, I'm listening, both sides of this. Councilmember Jones, I, I totally agree with you, but, uh, instead of using the word rodeo, it is a homecoming. Quite a few people do come to town, and they, they, they fill the hotels, and, and Dale, I know where you're coming from, because you're on the, looking at the, the marketing side. So, we're both saying the same thing, because we do have quite a few people that come to Bassdrop for homecoming, not just the rodeo. That's where you have all your class reunions, all these folks come back to town, and they're going to, they're going to fill some hotels during that time. So, we're, we're basically saying the same thing, but we're just trying to look at it at a different angle.
Okay, are you-
I think there's one last page.
Okay, let's do one last page, and then we're going to take a quick break. Councilmember Ennis?
I have a question before we get off this page. You mentioned Augustine, and you mentioned the branding, uh, and I understand there have been stakeholders involved, uh-
He's got some slides on that panel.
Okay.
We do.
Okay.
So, our budget process is underway, um, and, um, leisure marketing, uh, as I mentioned, we're looking at, uh, an additional campaign, uh, to come along for the next three months. Uh, our goal on meetings and conventions is to have our evaluation of our efforts in this segment, uh, and have a decision that is agreeable with the city regarding what we're doing with meetings and convention sales. Uh, trends and research, uh, we are, uh, maintaining that Smith Travel report, uh, and other, uh, reports that we're looking at to be able to provide information, and we'll be, Tracy, we'll be sending some information to you as finance director in regards to how we're seeing hot fund, uh, performance, and, uh, if there's any disconnects that, that we're seeing in that regard. Obviously, that's a forecasting, and we're required to help assist in forecasting for that. So, that's the end of, of our activities that meet, match up our scope of deliverables for existing contractors we have.
Yeah, but I'm, I'm looking at the packet, and the next couple of slides are the new executive director, and then specifically, because I feel bad I cut off Councilmember Ennis, I thought you were going to discuss the branding initiative. Yeah, and it's covered in 2B, so, in my packet.
Let's go to the next slide and see what we've got. No, I'm, I'm, I think I only printed out a partial, so, yes, uh, go back one. That's, that's the hiring process for, I'll let the chairman, uh, address that.
Um, so, we've engaged with Searchwide, Nicole Newman, uh, Vice President of the company, is our, our contact, and who's, uh, cert, you know, finding the applicants for us. Most recent update was today. She has, uh, multiple applicants that she's almost ready to present to the executive committee, and asked us to, uh, put a time together for a conference call with her the week of July 2nd, to, uh, go through the review of, uh, the applicants and narrow that down to the two or three that we may bring in to, uh, interview in person. So, uh, that's the, the current development. Um, they have been interested, um, over the last week or two, uh, enough that, uh, some of the different applicants have specifically requested, uh, further information about the organization, bylaws, uh, budget, current, where we're at on the current budget. Uh, that affirmation has been put together. Dale and his team have gotten that for me, uh, quickly, and we've gotten that back to Nicole, so, um, everything on that seems to be moving within her schedule, um, and we're excited.
We'll go to the next slide. That's also, that's part of Searchwide for what they're doing in terms of, of, they're actually marketing this position nationwide, uh, to get, uh, good qualified candidates to come in. Next slide.
Um, their, their main, uh, uh, way of doing that is, uh, targeted marketing. Um, they're, they're searching for people, um, that aren't necessarily looking for jobs, so while some of their, uh, process is putting this stuff out online, uh, the majority of their positions are filled from, you know, targeted, uh, contacting, calling these people directly, and then getting them the information from there.
So, they are doing background check and testing, uh, for their candidates, and, uh, you can see that, uh, the week of July 23rd, that they're looking to start their committee interviews. Next slide. And that's the rest of their, um, process that they're going to get into. So, here's the branding. So, we're in phase one. Uh, just as a reminder, on April 5th, we kicked it off with a meeting with the marketing committee. Research and discovery is underway. The survey questions, um, have been provided, the survey's been launched, and the survey's been provided extensively to the residents, uh, to get that input through it. On June 12th, the survey, uh, closed, and Augustine began evaluating the data, uh, and we're underway now, June 21st through 25th, with interviews by stakeholders.
Okay, now, I think Councilmember Ennis would like to ask his question, because there, you were talking about the interviews with stakeholders, they're going on the 21st through 25th, and I think that's what you were asking about.
And who are those stakeholders?
Well, the, um, Chamber of Commerce has been involved, um, the, um, City Council, uh, or Mayor has been involved, um, the, um, community at large, um, in terms of different assets, uh, have been involved, uh, and of course, the Board of Directors of, of Visit Bassdrop. So, it is, in terms of broad input, the broad input was done through a, um, billing, a utility billing insert, that went to all the, um, people that receives, um, City of Bassdrop utility bills, uh, inviting them to go to the website and conduct, and do the survey through the website. Next slide. So, this is their, it's a hard eye chart to, to be able to look at, but it basically shows about a, a three and a half to four month process that we're engaged in. Again, it started in April, so we're, we're about halfway through.
Okay, and I was going to say, um, from the packet, that was the end of the deal. It is, I'm going to call it 12 after 8:00. We're going to take a break until 8:20. Please grab a cupcake, go to the bathroom, do whatever you need to do, but we're in, I've been asked if we could please take a short break, so we're going to be in recess. Okay, I think, we, we have enough of us that we're going to get started again, because it's 8:20, and I know, I know Visit Bassdrop has had a very long day with your board meeting and the branding exercise and meeting with us tonight, so, let's, let's get going again. We are on 2C, receive presentation on Visit, Visit Bassdrop monthly report. It's like Hot Report 101, to educate council members on the elements of the monthly report. So, I want to make a clarification. You will see that in April is what is in the packet, so Dale's going to, um, briefly go over, and, and then, Board, you will see, this is the only information that council gets, is what he's going to go over in these next few slides. And then, Council, you are well aware that we have a council meeting next Tuesday, and on that council agenda, he is scheduled to present per the contract, and he will be presenting May data at our June meeting. So, uh, this, and you have a copy of it, but it'll be presented on, on Tuesday, the 26th, but what he's going to go over is April data, because that's what they had when we posted the meeting, and the purpose of this is mainly to ask the questions about, well, why are we showing that number? What's good, what's bad, that type of thing. Councilmember Jones, or you want to ask a question?
So, is that, is the presentation that you're going to make at the Tuesday meeting going to include some of the numbers that we were talking about?
The financial report?
No, ma'am, it's already been submitted and will be published in the morning.
Well, is it possible that he can bring that information with him? It's, it, the agenda item says, present monthly information, and we don't always have, what we see at council meeting is not always every single slide in the, in the packet.
I mean, it's on the agenda, why can't he just bring a piece of paper that just has a general idea of the money and just hand it to us?
The, the financial statement from the board packet this morning, um, Sarah has them, she'll email it to you in the morning. Is that okay? I mean, is that what you're looking for?
I, I think it was going for, as we go through this, and if we have some questions or clarifications, and with the information that you've heard now, it may not be in the packet for the whole world, but he can present something Tuesday night that still-
Gotcha, yes.
-meets the agenda item, and it could answer some of the questions that we have, because it's Thursday, and we're not meeting till Tuesday night, I believe, is Councilmember Jones's point. So, particularly, any of that, of, event data, you know, just, you've heard the conversation, so if you can fill in anything, that would be great. If you can't, you can't, but clearly, there's a desire for some additional information.
I think that we can put something together by Tuesday, and it may not be the final format that you want to get it in, um, and then we'll, you know, go to that quarterly reporting plan as, uh, the city manager suggested before each funding.
So, just for clarity, because we did not, it, things got a little weird when we didn't have the meeting last week, because we didn't have it on council, the presentation, so we're combining 2C and 2D. We, this is where you're getting April data, he's going to answer questions about the report, and then next Tuesday, we'll get May data, and then they have met their contractual obligations. But if you look at the agenda, it's learn how to read the report and then get the report. We're, we're doing those two things together.
That wasn't the intent. The, the intent and the specificity of what was requested by council that caused this to be here, is, um, Mayor Ennis, Mayor Jones, not Mayor Ennis, Councilmember Ennis, Councilmember Jones, um, specifically had requested what we called Hot Report 101, how to read it, what were the elements, and all of that. So, are, are you doing that as a part of the presentation? Okay, my apologies then.
Yes. So, on the first page, um, and I, let me start by saying that this report is designed to be specific to the efforts and energy of Visit Bassdrop. There are some data, um, where it's not for us to take credit, but it's important for us to, um, have an awareness and knowledge. This is one, which is the Lodging Industry Report. Um, and this one, uh, is, takes a little bit of exhumination to, uh, to work. We contract with Smith Travel, which produces what's called the Star Report, our hotels are, uh, use that. They can do competitive analysis, uh, on how other hotels are performing. We do destination analysis. So, these, the Bassdrop that's listed there, um, is Bassdrop Hotels, does not include the Hyatt, uh, uh, Lost Pines Resort. They are in a different segmentation, um, so, if we could go to the next slide, there will be an explanation. This is, uh, 1 through 9, are a list of comparative towns and cities. I know it says competing, oftentimes, it's, it can be compete, competition, definitely. Oftentimes, it's comparative. You can see that we have the South Austin Airport cluster of hotels that we track. Uh, that includes the Hyatt, uh, in that cluster. Uh, Bryan College Station is in there, Brenham's in there, Saguin, City of Austin, Lino, San Antonio, Fredericksburg, San Marcos. Now, doesn't mean we're competing with San Antonio or competing with Austin, but, uh, it is probably a good idea for us to know how they are doing in terms of occupancy and ADR, to give us a sense of how our region should be doing. If they're down significantly, it's probably an indicator that we're going to be facing some of the similar issues. If, if we're down and they're up, it means that we, we have something specific to our segment. Now, the reason you don't get the names, and those names are in no particular order, is we are not authorized to release the performance data of any of those destinations specifically. We can list them anonymously, if you will, uh, but the agreement that we signed with Smith Travel is we cannot, uh, tell you which one of those is, is who. Now, we can do that in executive session with the board, or if the council wanted to know specifically how a destination was doing, uh, we could do that in executive session as well, because that is confidential data. Uh, one of the things that was suggested at today's, uh, board meeting was that we perhaps, uh, substitute, uh, some of the, uh, regional, uh, entities that are much larger, like Austin and San Antonio, and get more, uh, of a smaller comparative, uh, uh, listing to see how we're doing compared to some of those. So, we can certainly switch out and, uh, remove Austin and remove San Antonio, uh, from that, or any other, uh, we can mix and choose. Uh, we can only do nine. That's the maximum amount that we can do. So, on the heading up there, occupancy is simply an indicator of if you have 100 rooms, out of those 100 rooms, how many are being filled, uh, for that month period. So, your percent occupancy, um, this was our first month since October, that we had a slight decline in occupancy, um, and, um, average daily rate is the next column. It's a combination in terms of hotel performance of, and hot tax collections of two elements. One is how many rooms are occupied on a given day, a given night, and what kind of rate did you get for it? You can have high occupancy and low ADR, and you're going to generate X amount of, of hot funds. You can have high ADR and lower occupancy and match that. So, the hotels from a destination performance standpoint, we're interested in both, how the average daily rate is performing- the average daily rate is performing, as well as how the occupancies are doing. So the first column is for March specific, year over year to March previous in 17, and then you have the calendar year to date. One thing to note is, Smith Travel is one of the few reports that we're doing a calendar year report, so it starts January, goes through December. Most of our other reports that you'll see in this are fiscal year, starting in October going through September. This one, the only way we can get the report is by calendar year report. So I'll stop and ask if there's any questions on how to read this and what the importance, how, in, in terms of what we're doing, it's, it can be read as an indicator of the performance of your destination marketing organization. I caution against doing too much of that, because while we certainly have an influence, we're not the only driver of demand for the destination. There are lots of other elements that are at play. The economy comes into play, and over other, overarching issues come into play as well. But it, it is an indicator of the health of our hospitality industry, which of course, we feel that we have a responsibility to report. Councilman?
It's a great report. I've never seen the, the abbreviation RevPAR, what, what's that stand for?
Revenue per available room. So that's really what Vina is interested in. It is the, it's the factor of each individual room, how much revenue is that room generating for her property. We don't, we don't pay too much attention to the RevPAR, except if RevPAR is not in a positive, we know our hotel industry is not happy. That's what we pay attention to. What we, what we try to take a look at is in that far column, percent change of rooms sold. There is, occupancy can be impacted by several different things. A hotel could take a floor down for renovation, it's not gonna be counted in their inventory, they're gonna remove it from their inventory, and the occupancy is gonna be on a reduced inventory. Percent change of rooms sold is the actual number of rooms that were sold, either more or less, on a month-to-month basis. And so that's how we're looking at it. And unfortunately, April was our first, since October was our first month that we had a slight decline. Our, we're overall in very, very good shape. If you'll notice on the year-to-date, 6.5% change in occupancy, and, and it runs parallel on the percent rooms sold at 6.5. You can see that there's some other, of the destinations that are also doing well, but many of our small communities are not doing as, as well as Bastrop is doing in terms of the year-to-date, starting January through April. And that's your snapshot on that. So anything else before we move on?
I'd, I'd like to point something out that might help council a little bit. One thing I've learned in reading this is, you can kinda get an idea of the size of the market by the room rate, so that's one place to kinda cheat a little bit.
Yeah, that, that list of comparative cities seem to be, have nothing in common with the, except of being regional. Would, would it not be a better?
So the, the question is, is, you know, are we in, are we in competition with Fredericksburg as a small Texas town destination? I, I think we are. Whether we want to be or not, and you can debate the merits of it, they have a similar-sized destination, they're a historic, cultural destination, and they are marketing aggressively out there to drive demand to their destination.
Well, I was, I was leaning more toward the, the South Austin, or the Austin market, the San Antonio market, and Bryan College Station.
The South Austin Airport is one, we're gonna make another approach with Smith Travel. We, we try, and I understand their logic, we tried to get the Hyatt included in the Bastrop report. Their feeling is, because they are so dissimilar from our Bastrop hotels, and from a rate and from a occupancy standpoint, that it would skew the, the Bastrop side of it. They were not comfortable, and without the Hyatt specifically as an individual. So they were not comfortable including it in the Bastrop. They were comfortable in putting them in the airport cluster of hotels and having them, because they felt that their rate was more parallel with those. So I would, I would like to see us keep the South Austin Airport in there, just again, as an indicator to see how the Hyatt is doing. I can anecdotally tell you from our board member, Dave Jacobs', report just recently, they're having, which the mayor and the city manager were part of, they're having their best year on record for their property, so it's good to hear. So they might be actually driving a little bit of, of push for that South Austin cluster that they're in. We can switch and change these cities at will, so if any board member has, has a desire to see how another community is doing that, we can, we can do that. We can't add to it, but we certainly can switch, uh, switch out.
I think what my direction was, or my thought was, it should be more comparative relative to the population regardless of its regional aspect, and in some cases, we're competing against region, and cities within regions of similar size. And I, I think the comparison to those cities, say in the DSW area, the Houston area, that are of similar size to Bastrop and being in the same markets, might be more advantageous to, to compare our efforts and our, our lodging industry report.
Well, it's, again, it, it is a, definitely a comparative, not a competitive element on that. But yeah, we can change that if, if the council has a desire to have another city added. They, they, of any size, any community with any hotel size is reported, so we can just simply ask for that.
So let me ask you this. Can you give us that information specific? Can you hand us information when you present that would give those, correlate the correct city to the correct information, and then take that back up when you leave, so that it's maybe something that we can see specifically, but then that you take back up so that it's not something you could share? You know, is that allowed when you do your presentation, so that we know what you're talking about? Because it's just, you know, the presentation is for us, it just seems to take a little bit of that mystery out, but...
That might be a question for legal. The comfort level that I've had in the past is, when city council has wanted to get that level of detail, we go into executive session, so it's not a public document. Again, we are, we are not authorized, we sign an agreement with Smith Travel.
That's fine. I was just, I was just wondering, I didn't know.
And if I understand correctly, any document that we present to, to this body becomes a public document, unless it's an, unless it's in executive session.
Well, for me, the only city that I can see up there, well, there's a couple I see, but instead of Seguin, I would like to see maybe New Braunfels. You know, just...
Again, it, it's an...
Have you ever been to Seguin?
It's an indicator, these are, it's not a statement of, first of all, we had to limit, we can only do nine comparatives, and it, it was just the first attempt to...
No, I'm just throwing that out there, because I just see, I see it just not necessarily as competition, but just as comparative of what's going on there. But that's just, would be one recommendation, just myself, 'cause you asked if we wanted to see something different. That would be my only recommendation.
I, I think that's fine, and I'm, I'm, we're here to have an open conversation, but I wanna be clear that, that I think the final decision is with this board. So if, if the Visit Bastrop Board of Directors has decided those are the ones they wanna see, I think we need to be respectful of the fact that it's their data and their board.
Excuse me, I thought he asked us what we thought, so I apologize.
I, I think he was just trying to explain the report, here's the cities, now, correct me if I'm wrong, but you guys had a conversation about which cities you were gonna have on your report? Is that correct?
Probably not.
Good, good point.
Yep.
Well, then, Councilmember Jones, you, you picked the exact right day, so I, did you guys talk about New Braunfels and...
We're gonna, we're gonna gather a list of, of other, other cities we wanna see off of.
Councilmember, I apologize, I, I thought the board had picked these, and I didn't want us to be stepping on their toes.
I thought he asked our opinion, so I apologize, I wouldn't be...
Dale, one of the things to get at, Councilmember Jones, and be in a, in a lane that they can do, that would be something that should be in the business plan, or should be addressed in the, the strategic plan, so that when they approve the year's work and how the money is spent, that's a, that is a target that should be talked about in those two documents in September, when you come forward to get their blessing for next year's funding.
I, I think that's terrific. Councilmember Jones, are there ones up there that you think, I don't understand why we're even looking at that one?
No, I, I thought he asked our opinion, and I just thought that...
No, 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 that's fine.
New Braunfels was a good comparison, and that Seguin's not. That's just, just throwing it out there.
That's perfect.
Let me clarify it, if, if I can. It was presented, it is a staff responsibility, the expertise that we bring to the table is to, is to say that this is our recommendation for various different reasons of why we should be taking a look at these different cities. It was presented, and there was no challenge to it. Today, there was a question that came up about whether or not we should change the, the mix, and as far as we're concerned, it's, it's fine, all we have to do is, is make that change. But it is, it is a, I think we have a pretty good geographic, and we have a pretty good comparative side of that. But there is some, I, I, you know, some responsibility from a staff perspective to make the recommendation, and then have that accepted to, by the Board. Whether or not they chose it, or if it's a staff, I think is parsing the language a little bit.
Yeah, and it's, I think we know where we are. Council, since they are taking input, and they, they did ask our opinion, is there any other cities that you think they ought to be taking a look at? Do they have a strong opinion? I don't know one they should look at, I just don't know why College Station might be in that mix now, but I'm gonna leave.
I mean, a lot of it, a lot of it is to, to get an idea of the area that we're in, and how the area that we're in is, is doing in general. So, so some of those are regional specific, and then some of those are, you know, comparative specific, so there's a, there's a mix of both in there, so that we're kinda seeing both.
Perfect.
So we can, we can move some things around, but that's, that's why I...
Oh, I'm gonna leave it up to y'all, you know what you're doing.
We'll go to next slide. So we already went through some of this, the primary indicator of, of increase or decrease, hotel industry jargon, meaning revenue per available room, indicator of profitability for the hotel. This is just a graph. What we should do to improve it is, your zero point line needs to be identified better so that we understand that even though you went from a 22% increase one month, going down to a 14% increase the next month, it's not bad news, that's actually good news. 22% increase is not sustainable for most destinations to have that, but it shows some of the, the ebb and flow of what we're doing.
Okay, this is an example of a way that, in my opinion, would make it easier, is it's great to know where zero is, but what, it would, is it, is zero the goal? Is it, you really hope it's always 3%? But what's, what, at what point, there's a line on there that if it drops below, we ought to be concerned.
That would be zero.
Okay, okay, then it would be great to have zero as a different color and a horizontal line all the way across.
I, I would like to see another report added to this one, which is the actual occupancy, rather than the percent of change.
It's back on the other slide, it's not, it's not on this, but we can do that, we can do the occupancy.
You mean, you're talking about back on this one?
Yeah.
No, I'm not looking, I, I'm, I'm a visual guy, I'd love to look at it and see it
Okay.
in a line graph of, of the, of the occupancy.
We can do that.
And does zero, does zero mean 50%? Like, that's what, you don't wanna go below?
This is a, it's a percent increase or decrease. So anything above zero is a positive gain, anything below zero is a negative gain.
But how do you determine zero?
Zero would be if it was the same occupancy as the prior year, same month.
Oh, okay.
So if it was 90%,
So this is a year to...
And it was 90% again the next year, then it would be zero.
So this is, uh...
Wait, 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 she's, did you go back? So are you there?
How, Dale, how do you reconcile your charts and graphs to what we see from a hotel occupancy revenue source? 'Cause our story's very different than yours.
Part of that is, sometimes it's the delay in your collections. We're reporting at a specific time and place, and oftentimes, the collection cycle for the city lags. Previous destination experience, the...
Should, should it lag 20, 25%?
No, no. Correct, Hyatt is not in that graph on that. However, so, I think where you're going, city manager, is the, you want, it, it should be, if we're showing an overall increase, and if we can, if we can say the Hyatt's increased as well, average daily rate has not decreased, it's, it's either flat or increased, and occupancy has increased, then hot funds should increase as well. Sometimes, what we experienced in other destinations is you get a issue with some hotels that are in arrears and are going to catch up. I don't know what our process is, and I don't know what our audit process is for that. So that's where your differentiation can, come into play. There was that differentiation in previous destinations. We always had a ongoing, where if there were properties that were in arrears in payment, for whatever reason, you could show where, what efforts were being done to, to get those collections up. But they, the two should track pretty, pretty closely.
Need you to turn on your mic, we can't hear you.
Okay. The hotels remit tax on a quarterly basis or monthly?
There's a mix. The larger hotels pay monthly, but there are some of the smaller hotels that are allowed to do it on a quarterly basis. I'm not aware of any that are in arrears, they're, they pretty much pay. We don't have any hotels that really don't pay. As far as there's anomalies with exemptions, we don't really know how much or how little exemptions are being taken. You know, especially with the Hyatt, with what type of events or conferences that come there, I'm, I don't get that information, so I'm not aware of how much or how little there is.
Well, I'm just suggesting there may be some mismatches in timing.
Yes, there is always gonna be timing.
It, it's, and you're exactly right, sir, it's just that our numbers are not tracking as positively as the news is every month, and that's our concern.
So one of the things that Smith Travel report can't differentiate, it's, it's basically saying how many rooms are occupied at what rate. What it doesn't differentiate is how many are, that, that qualify for exemption, because they're 31 days or longer stay, how many are vouchers, so it doesn't, it doesn't track that. So if we lose out of our hotels a big block of rooms because they've become exempt from the hot tax, this report is not gonna match up, and that would be, that would be the change there.
And, and I wanna point out, too, that this particular chart, that 21% reflects Harvey, the Harvey overflow, for which there is no hotel tax generated, because it was female. So I don't, I don't know about the lags and stuff, but this isn't, this is, you know, not a very good slide for, for what you're looking for, I think.
I think what we're looking for some, something is, is every month Tracy gives a financial report, and every month Tracy talks about the hotel occupancy tax fund and our collections. And so she rocks along, and they're a little slow, they're a little off, and then Dale walks in the door and says, woo, boy, they're up, boy, they, the Hyatt's had the best year ever, and we're looking at the math going, hmm, okay. So that's the disconnect, and we're just trying to, and that's part of the struggle I think council has with this report, is that we do consistently report on hotel tax, not how they spend it, but we do talk about how it comes through the door. And so it, there is a disconnect on the story, and part of the struggle is getting them married up. So when she says they're sluggish, he's not walking in going, woo, we've had the best year ever, and we're going, really? Where's the money? Show me the money! And there lies kind of the, the struggle that we're trying... And there lies kind of the struggle that we're trying to figure out. And we do know the oil field is booming. They are the ones that are gonna have the exemptions and the long stay. So if some of these hotels are relying on a lot of oil field traffic, that could be a huge explanation. But again, we don't have the data to prove that. So it's just a question of talking through, trying to figure out if we can understand something for which there is no instructions.
Well, and I think that, where this information comes from, maybe that's, maybe Visit Bassdrop needs to be able to interpret that for y'all on a, in the report. I mean, you know, I look at that and see people streaming out of Houston over three-month period of time. That does, and you're not gonna get a dime out of that. So, maybe that would help if there are anomalies.
Honestly, your time's valuable and our time's valuable. So, the problem that I have is this chart is really, if you go back a slide, it's that number. It's one number on this chart that you're now plotting on a line chart.
For a visual.
And I don't know a whole lot more than I, if I know that percent rooms sold, I always want it to be zero or more. That's minus 1.6. Gee, that's not good. That following slide, is a whole nother slide, and I can't, and honestly, you can't tell that it's negative 1.6 on that slide. You can't see where zero is. And even if you can, I don't know any more, looking at this slide, than I knew from the slide before. And so, that, I think that's part of what we're, are we supposed to be able to see more than we did the one before?
It goes back to the counselor's point. Some are visual and want line graphs versus seeing the numbers. So, this was an attempt to show a visual graph of occupancy. I think it is, I think we're dead on. I think this destination has received probably a higher level of exempt hotel stays than many other destinations have because of our unique situation. It still impacts the overall amount of rooms that are being sold and people in our community. So it is, it's just, it's an indicator.
Okay, so then I would say, if I was gonna show this kind of chart, then I would, to Sean's point, say like, okay, these two months, it was impacted by Harvey. We think this drop-off was impacted. But give, give a little more data or bullet point as to why, you know, so should we be extremely concerned? Is it 1.6? Cause in my opinion, it's been on a downhill climb since December. So, you know, and so if there, if you don't offer something else, because the truth is, we all are going through the packet and it's hard, you know, you guys have seen, our agenda packets are huge. So we need some data on this slide. Is there any, Council, am I off base, or is there anybody that gets more out of this slide than they do the one before? Or are you looking for some data?
That's why I'm looking for the occupancy, rather than the difference per month. It would just do me better to see each month and see if it go up or down.
I think what he's saying is he would like that graph, but instead of the percentage, just put the number of rooms. Is that what they're asking for?
Yes.
He just wants the number of rooms dropped down instead of just, I think that's what they're asking for.
It's good input. That's why we're here. We can modify these reports as needed. If it's not getting anywhere you need to get it, we can certainly change it.
But I just, to me, I just think that the report should be more friendly, because it's not just for us, it's for the public. And we have to present this to the public, because, I mean, I have people that will ask me questions and I really, it's just like, yeah, 1.4 million, yeah, I don't know. You know, and I just think it just needs to be simpler and if you, since you have the expertise, I don't need to see 15 charts. I would really just like it boiled down, made real simple, people at home can kind of understand it. If you wanna give us a little bit more detail, that's fine, but that's just...
But if we could go back, go back two slides.
It's frustrating.
So, the most important thing, I think, and that was what was raised here, is right now, through this report, the percent occupancy is positive, 6.5% over the previous year for year-to-date. Take a look in that column and see how many are in negative. That means that Bassdrop, in this regional comparative set, is performing, I would state, very well. Only one or two others are coming close to what we're performing. Now, that doesn't mean that that's the result of what Visit Bassdrop is doing, but that's what our hotel industry is doing. So, if we simplified it down, I would simply just give you the year-to-date and say, this is where we're at.
What would be helpful is, since you've got some extra margins, instead of using acronyms, is just to spell it out. Because I've already forgotten what you told us this was. So, from one month to the next, instead of using DMO terms, just spell it out. And that way, they can look at it and see it.
Okay.
And honestly, it can be that, go back, it can be that chart. And then, what would be great for me is, like, when Tracy, she presents the same chart every month, so we know kind of what the numbers are, but she'll do a summary of, this is the big thing you should know for this month. So, you made the point of, this particular month, the percent change of occupancy year over year, when I look down, I only see one other one that has a 6.5. Then the next one's 5.3 and a whole bunch of them are negative. So for, if I was presenting March's data, I would have had a big, nice star or something around the 6.5 and a short explanation on the side that says, we're doing great compared to the region this month. This is a positive. And the next month, it may be a different number that you, as the expert, it catches your eye and that's what you're drawn to. But if you could kind of give us a short, little, one sentence, it doesn't have to be a complete sentence, but just a couple talking points, I think it'd be beneficial.
We won't have those changes for the May report, but we'll have them for the following report.
Council, is that making sense to you? And if you did that, this is what I want you to look at, this is why it's important. And it can be, I want you to look at it cause it's good, or I want you to look at it because it's bad, then you don't have to do the next report and three other reports. We just, like, we, what part, and particularly, this has changed and so we're changing our strategic deal. This is, based on this information, we've made a major change. That's what we wanna be aware of.
I think you'll find, Mr. Lockett, that we're dumber and dirt on some of this stuff. So, we, we're probably, as we go through this thing, we're gonna be going, please make it simple for us. And I think your report is very illustrative of what you're doing, it's just that we get lost in it. That's the bottom line.
So, it may be that we have the detailed report for our board that has this data the way it is, and we do an executive summary, as the mayor just mentioned. So, we'll work on that. That's a good point. So, maybe we can, don't ever look at this slide. This is a...
The question I have on this one, and it's kind of weird, cause it's coming up this weekend, the Leathernecks are coming. We gave them, cause we were all thrilled. How do you not like a retired Marine? You know, God bless every single one of them. They wanted, if memory serves me, like $2,500. It was not much at all. And they have 300 couples that are spending three nights. So I don't understand why the convention center number is zero.
Because this is specific to the effort of Visit Bassdrop. It's not what the convention center is doing through that. So, with the Leathernecks, it gets into the definition of assist and leads. Our primary, the highest value of what Visit Bassdrop can do is discover a piece of business that hasn't made a decision where they're going, get us in the competitive mix, put us out there, we do the bid, they select our bid, and we book the business. We let it through a lead to get the hotel block put together, to get the convention center space on the books, et cetera. And then we convince the meeting planner to bring that meeting here. That's a lead-generated booking called originated. Assisted is if before the decision to bring the group to the destination has been made, a hotel has need for us to sweeten the offer, the Hyatt or any of our other hotels, and they come and say, we can get this meeting from Fredericksburg to come to Bassdrop, but we need something extra. Can you do this or this? Host a cocktail reception, pay for transportation, do whatever. If we can come into the process before the decision has been made to come here, then we can count that as an assist. The reason we couldn't count Leathernecks as an assist, as, and I was there at the beginning, they had already made the decision to bring the meeting to Bassdrop. They had already, were in contract discussion with the convention center. And they approached City Council for hot funding, not through Visit Bassdrop, for that funding. So, we were there to facilitate and support and help in that, but we don't, we can't take credit for bringing the Leathernecks to Bassdrop. And I think that's really important, that we only get credit for what we have the ability for, before decisions are made.
That's awesome. And I love you being completely truthful. Politically, what you've just given me is convention sales. Oh, then the convention center's had zero hotel rooms. So, if, when it says convention sales and it says zero rooms, that, so, if that had said convention sales by Visit Bassdrop, and I know your logo's on top, but if you're at home and you're looking real quick, you go, oh, the convention center's had zero hotel rooms.
And that is a true and factual statement, Dale, cause we had to make a presentation in April to overcome the fact that it doesn't appear that anything's happening at the convention center. So those little words right after that, convention sales by Visit Bassdrop, solves the problem.
And we actually discussed this earlier, I don't know if it was today or yet, it's all blended together. But we talked about this and we talked about what we could do, and I don't know that we've come up with a solution. But, you know, I think that because the convention does have hot funds funneling towards it, and those rooms do need to be presented to the community politically, that we need to have, maybe it's on this slide, a thing, you know, what is it generated not by us? And maybe the convention staff can provide us that information, so that we can add that into this slide, so that those things are being presented. The parts we had a part in, we take credit for, the parts we didn't, they're still being presented, so that y'all can see that stuff. We did discuss that. We don't know exactly how we wanna put that together, but it is on our radar and Dale's gonna come back to us with a solution for that. So, we're all talking about this right now.
I just had an aha moment, because when that word says convention, you mean literally conventions that you're trying to get here. And when I look at convention sales, I'm looking at it as, that is our convention center sales. And it's, no. So, some clarification, because if we don't know, we assume and we assume wrong, and y'all are thinking something else, and so that, so I think we're all on the same page now. Okay. But let me just say this, I mean, how do you know that all this marketing and advertising you're doing isn't because that's why these people have chosen Bassdrop? I mean, you know, that's why I think it's important that you put all that on there, because you're the fundamental driver in branding and marketing us and marketing the community. So I would think it's some, you have a little, I think you'd get a little bit of credit. You know, so that's why I think it would be good if you did put the total numbers on there. Cause I do think in some way you are participating in that, especially as time goes by.
And certainly, we provided support to the Leathernecks and to other groups that had already made the decision to come here and were engaged in supporting that. From an accreditation standpoint, we can't mix the two. We have to show the true, actual, but we can definitely make those changes.
There's room on the slide to stick another line or something, but, cause it, but there's no point in repeating, you get what our problem is. We gave money, they said they were gonna have nights, we look at this, it says no nights. That's a problem.
And may I ask a question, Dale? Maybe that's just pertinent to the board, because of the accreditation effort, and you create a different streamlined report for them that says...
We will, we will come back...
Why do they need to know assisted versus not assisted?
We will come back to the board with the changes that are being noted here.
As Councilmember Rogers pointed out, we could care less how we got them, we just wanna know that we got them. Like, that's...
Well, and I appreciate Dale's values and his definition of assist, but he may be the only DMO director in Texas that doesn't wanna take credit for the conventions that are being held in town, because most of them, if you provide a goodie bag or help with a tour, are gonna list them on their monthly report. So I think that we can come up with something in the middle to satisfy everybody's needs.
We're not trying to mess up your accreditation, we're just trying to make sure that we're getting a full picture. So you, you guys are the experts, do what you're comfortable with, but that zero under convention center is offsetting.
Next slide. So this is just, our sales initiatives is pretty straightforward. It just tells you what our activities are on that. I don't think it really needs any, any other explanation. It will be as detailed as our efforts are in regards to what we're doing. This is where it gets maybe too much information as well. It's very important for the staff to have this information and for the board to be aware of it. This starts getting into the marketing metrics, and this is the website overview. I think we've got some highlights, so if you'll go to the next slide. So these are the terms defined for a user, new user, sessions, number of sessions per user, page views, average session duration, and bounce rate. Now, all of that is very important to the performance of the website. But I certainly get, especially after tonight's conversation, that that might be a little bit too detailed for what we're trying to do, because it's, you have to have a certain high level of marketing knowledge to interpret it.
I think at this point in time, it might be, but you've made a real point to say that the website and special events marketing is all you have, until you have a branding campaign to do different. So I think even though it is complicated, what it does show is the efforts of the website that until you have something else to offset, we can at least see, got 44,000 followers on Facebook, you got a website that's getting this kind of traffic. So I think if you took that out prematurely, you're not reflecting what you've represented to the community you're doing until you can do something different.
No, I agree. We have it in here because we believe it's important. I was just acknowledging that there is, there's some, there's a learning curve in this. And tonight, I don't know how deep you want to go into what a user is and the value between a new user and existing. I think if we can go to the next slide, I can help, because it summarizes it a little bit better. This, this one is what our indicators are showing. I know Tracy does the same thing with finance, you've got colors. What we're looking here are for green dots, on total pages per visit, average visit duration. Bounce, bounce is when people come in and they click out. You do it as a user all the time. You're going there for a reason and it's not performing for that reason, so you bounce out of it. So you don't want a high bounce rate on it. Organic pages per visit is very, very important. Organic is how the website is performing on Google search, primarily, there's other search engines, but we'll just limit it to Google right now, in terms of people typing in generic search terms and they find our website. So it's not coming from a advertising where you're clicking on a link, it is they organically found it. So, what this is, is you see Bassdrop's number and then you see the industry averages. And one of the things that we, so we don't generate this, it's the industry that's generating this. And this is how our website is performing compared to other DMOs, regardless of what size they are, if they're big ones or small ones, it doesn't matter. So that's comparative on this.
What would possibly solve all of this, is if you take those awesome boxes you've created and put them on a couple of pages called definitions and stick it to every report, and then from one month to the next, they can appreciate what the bounce rate is and why it matters. And that might be not only important for Council, but for the citizens that go on the Council's website and get the packet, to be able to have that translator, and it wouldn't be up to something you'd have to create.
You don't ever have to talk about it.
That's right. It's just there and they can flip to it and read it, and that may solve a lot of problems.
We can do that. Go ahead to the next. So, I mentioned the organic traffic, the bread and butter of search engine optimization, which is also called SEO, and what that is and why it's so important. There's direct traffic, paid traffic, which we get. Paid traffic is where we do a sponsored post on Facebook that directs somebody to our website. Social media traffic and referral traffic, all of those are ways that we get people to come to the website to choose Bassdrop as our destination for whatever reason. Next slide. So this is basically getting into the weeds a little bit about where our traffic is coming from. That was really important to us, because it helped shape our marketing decisions. You can see that Houston, Austin, San Antonio, Dallas, College Station are all driving demand and interest. And you can see that our session rate, again, we started out... And you can see that our session rate, again, we, we started out fairly strong in November or December, we dropped in January, but then it's rebounding February, March, and April, and that's the way it should be happening, because of user interest. And it shows that Facebook is our primary driver for social networks that are driving that. Let's see if we have some pop-ups on this. So, month to month, it talks about our bounce rate, our average page per session, industry average is 2.16 pages, we're running 2.53. Session duration, that's the time people spend on the website, and the industry average is 1.56, and we're running at 2.21. So, it shows that our site is a little more sticky, it's engaging the customer a little bit more than the industry average, and that's important for us to help shape our decisions about how we market the destination and where we're marketing the destination in regards to tracking where our traffic is coming from. Next slide. This is just more on organic sessions. The chart that's there in the green is the important one. You want to see that continuing to climb and grow, and that's an effort of all of our marketing, social media, everything combined, to drive interest to the website, for people to use the website to make decisions of, are they coming here or are they going someplace else?
Okay, so, on this slide, the most important thing is the, the green bar chart. If you go back a slide, the most important chart is the little bitty one in the bottom right-hand corner. If you go back a chart, the most important thing is the, the part at the bottom, you want it to be green and not yellow. So, I would take those three slides and make it into one with those three components. Anybody else?
Color code them consistently.
And color code them consistently, that would be great. Yeah, and I think that one's staying.
Make sure I've got a note on that. This is what people are searching for and the number of times VisitBastrop.com appeared in the search results and impressions. It's hard to read from our perspective here.
And it's hard to read when it's on my iPad, too. So, that's back to, I'd rather look at fewer things that are the important things that we can actually read and follow, because I'm, I'm not spending time reading any of these. Anybody else? It's the, it's just-
So, I think, I think what we're learning is, is this information is critical for us making informed decisions about how we do our marketing efforts, but it's probably too much information for, for this purpose. We, we're going to have to be careful, I think it's going to be a learning curve a little bit. We will, we're making notes on the, on the changes and suggestions, and we'll take that through the board. You'll have for the June report, a revised report. If we go too far one direction or not far enough in other direction, we, we'll get that input.
Yeah, we're, we're pretty shy about sharing our opinion. Councilmember Ennis?
I think the bottom line here is that this report is real good for operational, operations, and for your board to look at, but we're basically interested in is, how well are you, are your efforts performing? And we just need the cut and dried stuff, and, because we get lost in the weeds pretty, or at least I do, I should speak for myself.
Well, we need, yeah, we just need to be able to interpret it to the public when we're asked questions. I mean, that's really what it comes down to, we just need those, the information we need to answer the public's questions.
So, this, this next slide probably falls into that. This gives us our demographics and interests. Again, it's important to us to know the lifestyles and what people like when they come to us, and who's coming, and the age groups that are coming in into it. I think what's good on this is it's showing that we're attracting pretty well across the board, except in the extremely young category. Now, that could be, if, if we feel that as a destination, we should be tracking better in that category, then we can identify efforts to try to boost that category, which is the 18 to 24.
This particular graph over here on the top right corner is the one that we should, we should include on that other page that the mayor suggested.
And Mayor Protem Nelson wants you to know that the 65 and over has gone up by one today, so that'll, that'll be changed in flight.
So, to go back to the conversation we had very early about targets, this would be a great slide if you have provided the council targets, and this could prove that you were meeting your targets. So, that's where this quits being busy and starts being relevant, because then council would know what to do with this. So, if, in the strategic plan, we're, we're targeting the food and dining enthusiasts, and that's a big part of your brand, then you would be able to say, look at here, on our website, that's exactly the demographic that we're hitting, check the box, target met. But absent that, this is not helpful. So, a slide like this with the targets, once y'all establish it, start tracking it, and you bring back a select piece of information, then what the council can say is, the top five things Visit Bastrop is targeting is food, news, shopper's lifestyle, and media, and boy, they are off the chart. Check box.
So, that, that, that's excellent. I think the word that you said, we need a year's worth of data to have that on it. This will tell us what we're resonating with. It won't be our opinion, it'll be our customers telling us what they're valuing and what their interests are. So, for the next year's focus, we'll be able to say, based on the data that we've generated of one year's use of our website, this is where we have the best bang for our buck to focus our marketing on that. So, it's definitely how it's going to be used.
And another issue, going, kind of going back to the, the report on the money, and you can sit there and tell us, look at how well we're doing here, and this is where, and it costs us this, then we can see the two at, at one time. That way, we can promote in the public's eye how, how wonderful the job is doing. So, you can give us the tools to, to tell your story, is what we're asking you to do. So, if you give us both, we can say, this is what we're doing, this is, look, they've gotten 5 million people over here, it only costs us $2, so.
Yeah, we, we want to be your best advocates, but when we get asked questions and we have the deer in the headlights look, it, it's, it's hard to be a good advocate for you. So, just kind of help us, help you, is I think the bottom line of that.
Sure. Go to the next slide. These are just, again, that metrics on social media, the Facebook overview, what the Facebook actual posts look like.
Yeah, I don't ever want to see that one again. Go, go back one, could care less. But that bothers me, the number of posts you sent decreased by 31% since the previous month. What I would like to know is, what, what was your goal? Was it to be even? Was it to do 10% more? Because if you, if they went down and you meant for them to go down, that's great, but on, on this, I, I can't, is it good or is it bad? I don't have anything to go by.
So, I, I wish we could be that focused. We have longer rate range goals that we're looking for. Obviously, we want to see increase of social media engagement. For a month to month, that is indicative, as example, the May report will show a 54% increase of, on this same chart. So, this is indicative of attractor activities that we felt we could leverage demand into the destination, and it's going to go up and down based on that.
And I'm fine with it going up and down, but today was the future several months ago. So, you, you, you didn't wake up that morning and decide what you were going to do that day, so, at, at some point, because the fact that it's down 31%, I'm more interested in, we planned on doing 20, and we did 20. If that's down from the month before or up from the month before, but you, at some point, you made a plan, this is what we're going to do in April. So, being down 31.1%, was that your plan?
That was our plan.
So, how, I, I can't tell that that's your plan and you hit it, because it looks like you're down 31%. So, I gotta have something to go by, and I would think that you guys are planning now, what, you know, what some of your posts are, you know, is your goal to post once a day? More than once a day? Is it once a day minimum, but then if we have, if it's right before Patriotic Festival, it goes up a lot? That's the benchmark I'm looking for.
Dale, we need a different interpretation, you know? The way that we address this is not all of our revenue is equal. So, what we do with council is by month, we set targets, and in the electric company, we know we're going to make more of our money in the winter and in the summer. It's going to be lower in the spring and fall, because it's cooler, we don't sell as much electricity. So, they can look that month and know it's going to be less than it was the month before, because it's tied to temperature. Property tax, we collect all of it by January, we don't collect another dime. So, if we hadn't hit our target by January, we're not going to hit it. So, I think what they're asking for is, you know, in May, it was the music festival, in July, it's going to be the Patriotic Festival, in November, it's going to be He Rose and Hot Rods. And so, in the months when you're feeling, because we don't have a destination, you're going to do a minimum of 15 or 20 posts just to keep us visible. Not just wear everybody out, but we got 44,000 people following us on Facebook, so we're going to do a minimum of 15 or 20 posts, because they can come and be on the river this time of year, it's a great time to come out and go to island, surf, whatever the case may be. That's what's missing, and we have this conversation every month at the DIAS, and so it would be helpful if we could solve that problem, so we don't have to have this every month.
So, I think, I think what will solve the problem in a big way is that this is month over month. What will be more important, once we have a month data in, is we know what we did in April in terms of number of posts. And so, we'll be able to set a goal, if we did X number of posts and had engagement at X number level, let's do an aspirational, let's try to increase that by a certain percentage the next April that we come into play. But we also know that we can't set it up at such a high rate if, unless there's something that is added to the product mix. I do want to, I do want to say something about posting. What we, what we are very careful about, what we've been trained to do, is that not all posts are equal. What we're trying to do, each of our posts are highly researched, and they are carefully curated, oftentimes with video support behind them, to be focused on what we think are going to drive people to want to come to Bastrop. So, it's, it's, it's one of those things that, again, I, I would like to say that in the May report, that wow, what a great, we're up 54%. It's just because we had a lot more to talk about.
Okay, we're, we're getting lost in the weeds again. It says total post 31, how many did you think you were going to make? End of, end of it. Go ahead, Sean, what were you going to say?
Thank you. So, just don't argue about it, just don't put it in there.
Yeah, that, I was going to-
You don't have any control over the engagements or the number of clicks, there's nothing we can do to help with that, why do we keep talking about this?
Well, it's important for him to-
No, no, I'm, why do, why are we to tell us that?
I don't think this slide even needs to be in here.
But I think you should get rid of it.
Just take, just leave this one for us, and take it out.
Yeah, take it out.
You're suggesting is you'd like to see an executive summary.
Yes.
Yeah, I don't think this one has any, it doesn't contain the y'all at all. We can do that.
No, so why are we even talking about it? Yeah, and go to the next one, that's for sure, please. That's not executive summary.
Same for the next page, and same for the next page.
Okay, well, I think that's most of the pages that we're done with.
Right, right. It should be a one-page deal.
It should, three, four slides done, at this point. Dale, you're working too hard for us.
So, please, I, I hope what's understood is, is that we were trying to be as detailed with information, and it's just-
Absolutely, absolutely.
-kind of input that we need, so we definitely can do that.
And you're still going to have to prepare it, because every bit of this, your, your board is going to want to look at. We just want you to do a sliced-down cut for-
Right.
Well, that's for y'all to decide.
Well, I subscribe that we can always ask for it from y'all if we want to look at these details and inspect them closer.
At any point in time, we can provide that information, that's correct.
And, and I would, when you do the executive summary, if something has taken a wild turn, then you may have an extra slide that month to explain something specifically, if, if it's, well, they're going to ask me about this, but executive summary is the key word.
So, one, one, we, in developing the contract and the deliverable, we put, we put this report in, it was based off of the Albuquerque report, level of detail. One important thing to note that escaped me, and why we're struggling with this, I believe, is that report was not received by the city council. That was a, a board of directors report only, and what we presented to the city council was a mid-year executive synopsis and an end-of-year summary.
So, if we need to make an adjustment to the contract, because it, I know it references specifically that report, so if we need to make an adjustment to that, that's fine, and maybe we don't want to do it till we do a few months and we know what it looks like, but I think we should have that representative and reflected in the contract.
And there was a lot of time spent on this report and that discussion, and the, the point was to be able to represent to the public where the $1.4 million was going in the sections of, of data that was relevant. I think there's two challenges today that we're fighting, and I don't want us to throw the baby out with the bathwater until it's time. First of all, it is new, and you have no comparative data. Albuquerque had been in place a long time, you could do five years, 10 years back, you could project, and you have real data every month to debate. Number two is, we don't have any branding or full-scale strategic report from which to decide, because this is your first year. And so, we're struggling, because we're augmenting what you would normally provide us with what you have. And all you have is a website, and social media, and special events, until you brand and build a strategic plan. So, we are debating a report with information that's not even going to be relevant when your branding is done and your strategic planning is done. So, before we make long-term decisions about whether or not this works, let's just acknowledge the data you have to fill it was not what it was intended to be, and let's wait until we get what y'all are going to actually be measured against, and then do that very thing, and we'll make that an agenda item next year, because you'll have your branding report, you'll have your strategic plan, and then council will be able to then decide in-report form what you really do want to see, against what y'all have pledged to deliver, and we can make up something that works for Bastrop when we have permanent information. But we are very much in an interim transformational data collection format at this point.
I, I just want to document that we're the ones that, we, we're the ones that put in the contract, we want to see all this stuff, now we're telling you, no, we don't want to see it, and, and I don't want them to be held accountable for something when we're changing the rules. So, that's, that's the only point.
And I think you can still do this, Dale, for the board, and it can be emailed to council or included in the agenda packet, but what you present publicly at the podium and what you share with the public needs to just be easily digested.
Well, I'm, I'm all about simplifying that, and I think we've, we've made some extensive notes, and so hopefully for the future ones, we'll, we'll have it, but always know that once we get to a point where we can start using some of this extensive data a little bit more, we, we always have it. We will continue to track and monitor all of these indicators and performance metrics, but we'll definitely be able to simplify the report down. So, on the last page, basically, it's just a synopsis. In this one, it was talking about the music festival, what we're trying to, trying to do is to generate buzz and create awareness, and then, of course, the Patriotic Festival, which is what we're working with, the chamber with right now. I think that might be, these are just a listing of marketing meetings and activities.
Don't need it.
Okay.
Don't need it.
And that's the same way, that's just too much detail, so. Yep. This is, I, I do think this is-
Is this the coming up one or the last one?
This was the last one.
Yeah, it's, it's April. Do we need to see the last November?
I don't think that's part of our report. Oh, I know why. We added that, that's not part of the April report. We added that to show a compilation of, since we started in October, I apologize, this is not part of the president's report, but it just gives you an overview of all the type of different marketing and effort since we started in October. And that's the end of the report.
All righty, so we're- So we're considering that as having completed 2C and 2D. Does any council members have any questions about 2C or 2D? Thank you, board, and I know you're exhausted, everybody's tired, that was brutal. But I do think when we can get an executive summary, we'll have better information, we can be good advocates for you. And back to, as we've said over and over, the community questions are, you gave them 1.4 million dollars, where'd they spend it? Where'd they spend it and what are we getting for it? So the more we can talk about that, the better off we're going to be. So the next item on the agenda is 2E, discuss essential tourism asset policy and special events previously funded by the city through hot funds.
Yes, we just handed out to our board today a proposed process for accepting applications for the supplemental hot funds from eligible groups and businesses. I think the important thing is that have the capability of attracting overnight visitors to stay. So obviously, we'll follow what the council has done in the past by asking the question, will the people have the potential to spend the night in Bassdrop if we provide the funding for that? What we state here is if an event will not generate hotel activity, while it may not be eligible to receive hot funds, some exceptions could be made if the event generates a significant amount of sales tax revenue and/or generates positive public relations exposure for the destination. So in this proposal that we're looking at, again, for your awareness, is we don't want to have it so hard and fast that if a group says, we're really not generating hotel room nights, that there could be other beneficial reasons why we would want to do that, such as positive public relations exposure. The applicant will provide a complete budget that will include all expenses and a detailed marketing plan. The requested fund for marketing and advertising should be less than fifty percent of the expected advertising and promotional expenditures. Again, we don't want to be the primary funding source for a group that's asking for funds. And applicants should also submit a plan documenting that they will market and promote the event and attract visitors to Bassdrop. So those are some of the guidelines. The preliminary funding request is that we will receive-
I have a question, if you don't mind. On the back, on the slide in the back, where they, you know, you don't want to be their own, only funding source, but now could they use their fifty percent, like locally, advertising bit where the hot funds would need to be outside the region? Would that make a difference to you?
If they're focusing their efforts outside, that's tremendous. That's what we want.
Oh, I understand what you want. I'm just asking, okay, so let's say their advertising plan, fifty percent of it is putting an ad in the advertiser, which is only going to be local. Are you counting that as part of their advertising money even?
It can be, yes.
Okay, I'll just add that question. Thank you.
And then, and this may be completely, or maybe way off base, go back one. The applicant should submit a plan documenting how they're going to market and promote. Do they give you credit for being a part of that? Do we get to see your logo? Do we see something about Bassdrop? Or is it all on their own and you're just giving them some money?
That, hopefully, we will have what I would call cooperative marketing. So we're also going to market the event. If we're going to provide funds for that, you'll see our marketing in that. So yes, as an example, our logo with Becky-
She totally switched. We just switched seats because I'm presenting next and I realized a second ago that I couldn't see the PowerPoint really well from my seat, so.
That's yours. This is yours.
No, no. Next.
Sorry.
I'm not sure if you got your answer. I didn't. I think what we're asking-
Because it sounds like maybe you don't want to be more than fifty percent of it. But if they come up with a flyer, is it going to say, is it going to have a Visit Bassdrop logo on it somewhere? Is anyone going to know that you were a part of that marketing? Is that one of the-
Do you require it?
It seems to me, if you go back a slide-
It needs to be a part of the requirement.
So that you get some credit for how you're spending your money.
Because I think when, like in the past, getting the hot funds, that was part of the requirement. We had, any advertising we did in the past, if you got hot funds, you put the city's logo on it because the city funded it, and that was part of the requirement.
And I didn't know if it, when it says that they're submitting something and you look at it, if that was one of the things that you were looking for. But I'm just saying, if you don't say that it's a requirement, they're not going to know that that needs to be on there. And so I'm asking, do you want it on there? Do you want credit?
Yes. And it's not credit. We actually, what we want is the Visit Bassdrop URL, so they will come and, so the marketing will expose the consumer to using the website.
Right, so you have to require it on there.
But part of the credit that you're getting is then when it's out in the community, they say, oh, look, that's another thing, Visit Bassdrop hooked with. That's-
Can we just add to that, that we're going to add our logo into the activity?
May I ask a question? Is there a definition somewhere of what essential Lost Pines flies?
That's, we will, right now Dale is talking about special event hot funding. And so I will go up in just a second and talk about what that means.
Thank you. We'll go to the next slide. So the preliminary funding, we will receive, so we won't have a specific time to receive applications. We'll receive them when they come. So at any point, as long as there's reasonable time for evaluation and proper planning and support of the event. Basically, requests occurring less than ninety days before the event will generally not be accepted unless there's significant extenuating circumstances. So basically, say in any time during the year, you have a special event, you want some hot funds, as long as you're not within ninety days of that event, you're free to-
I think that's a really good idea.
We also will request that room nights-
Hang on just a second, go ahead, Drusil.
I was just going to say, I think the city requires that if you're going to do a special event, your permit has to be turned in within sixty days, right? But so-
Special event permit, if they're requiring city services. So an event like the Leathernecks Convention, per se, may not necessarily require street closures or signage, so.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that he was going with the same rules, though.
So this is just some detail about trying to be able to get hotel use and applications, what we're going to be asking for. Next slide. And then projects that receive funding of five thousand or more for three consecutive years must provide documentation for the need for continued funding. Basically, we just want to be able to see that we're getting the best investment that we can and know how the funding helped the event develop and expand. We also want to tie to take a look, see if there's any other sources that have become available for funding. And if the absence of funds would put the continuation of the event in jeopardy, we would not want to be able to do that. And then we're requiring a post-event report within sixty days of the event.
I don't understand why you're waiting three years to find out if you've become, if they can't do the event without you. I'm not following why.
Did you guys have to be like, "Please"?
No, I'm just wondering, is it the, we'll give you, is the idea that we'll give you a jump start, but you've got to be able to pick it up on your own? Is that your point?
I think in general, and it may not apply exactly here with some of our events, but in general, what you want to do and the way that we've negotiated with other events is to say, our purpose for giving you your funding request is to help you get started and bring your event to Bassdrop. And that at some point in time, you need to become self-sustainable through your ticket sales or through other things, so that at some point in time, we can use those funds to bring another event. Because they're not, at some, if we keep everybody at the same level for continuation of all their events, we'll have no opportunity or capacity for expanding it.
That makes completely perfect sense to me. But I would think you would, somehow I'm reading this, that you're having that conversation for the first time after three years. That's what's throwing me off. So if you've gotten five thousand dollars, it would seem to me that part of they need to understand is you've got two years, five years, three years, and we're cutting you off. Something of that.
This is setting an expectation that after three years of funding, we're going to have a serious dialogue about trying to reduce the level of funding support. And so it's putting them on notice so that-
Why would this trade it to you?
Well, it's an arbitrary number, I mean.
But see, the thing to me is, there's a lot of events that come to town that don't sell tickets, like the car show. Why would you want to cut them off? I mean, that doesn't, this doesn't make sense to me. Because a lot of things, people are putting together all this work, it's all volunteer, they're doing these amazing events that are getting big. We want to be part of that sponsorship.
But is the car show part of this?
No, no, you've got to get on the mic, we can't hear you. Sorry.
Is the car show part of this?
The car show does not currently request any hot funding.
Thank you.
And I think Dale's intent is that hot funds are generally, when used for special event funding in other communities, they're seen as an investment fund. And they're used to help close a gap. And so theoretically, special event organizers should be able to, after they have managed to establish a presence for that event and establish those relationships with sponsors, that they will not ultimately need a source of funding for the rest of the event's lifecycle. And so I think that's where Dale is coming from, and I think it's a good idea. And it's to be evaluated. It's not saying that necessarily they won't, but after so many years of funding, we've grown and we've nurtured you, we want you to get your wings and fly. And I think that some events may not, for whatever reason, how they're set up, be able to do that, but at least to have those discussions with those event organizers.
And that's where I am. I think that discussion should be in year one, not after year three. I think you start setting those expectations and it shouldn't be, now suddenly it's three years into it and I need more documentation, that you've got to have a strategic plan with them going all along. Yes, we're going to help you. It may be more than five thousand dollars, and we're planning on doing that a couple more years or whatever. But just, when I read this, it seems like I've gotten money for you for three years and now you want a bunch of inform, now you're going to sit down and want a bunch of extra information from me.
That's not the intent. So we'll reword the documentation.
Why don't we just reword it to say something to the effect of, you know, any reoccurring, you know, if anybody comes back and asks for the same funding again the following year, that this is going to come into play and we're going to have that conversation as soon as they come back. Because they may not ever come back.
That's fine. And I may be reading it different than anybody else is reading it. I'm just trying to set expectations ahead of time so people don't come back and say, Councilmember Jones, they gave me the money two years in a row and now they're asking me for something I didn't know I was supposed to be keeping track of. That's what I'm trying to avoid.
Dale, let me translate for you. What they don't want is when you cut them off to come across the street and they have to explain it. It's not complicated.
Thank you.
Wouldn't we want our logo on the successful events material and claim credit for-
Yes, that's what I would say.
Absolutely. That's why I would want to continue funding.
Can I ask you to clarify for me?
Yep.
Funding versus advertising dollars. You said the car show is not getting any funding.
Correct. The car show does not apply for hot fundings. They do apply during the special event process. And currently, all of our events that apply throughout that process pay a small application fee. So they get assistance from the city as far as setting up the event. The Main Street program has worked with the car show organizers the last two years to do some promoted Facebook posts on our page and to print their lanyards and things like that. But they have not applied for hot funding from the city in several years that I'm aware of.
So the heroes and hot rods that we poured so much into, that was advertising for not funding. This is two different animals.
Correct. Visit Bassdrop promoted the car show. Visit Bassdrop promoted Lost Pines Christmas. So, and I guess we may have, should have started with my portion of the presentation. And I apologize that I couldn't see the screen really well from there, so I tried to bat it from Dale. Do you guys want to go back to the beginning or we'll just keep going? The idea is, is the city for many, many years has had a hot fund application process. And different events and entities and different event organizers have applied for that funding. And last year's council retreat, the council was very specific that they do not have the expertise to determine which one of those events are actually, you know, obtaining the greatest number of room nights and how do they allocate that funding. You guys inherently at Visit Bassdrop are made up of industry and tourism hospitality representatives. Your staff understands the market of hotels and advertising, and so you guys are better equipped, we believe, to make the decision on this special event funding that the city has given out through that application process. When I arrived, there are certain entities in town that we just threw this essential tourism asset name on. I don't think that that has been decided. But things like the Bassdrop Opera House and the Museum and Visitor Center, for years they have been applying through the city's hot funding process, which was really designed for special event funding. And so it did not allow those organizations to really be successful through that process because since they're applying with a special event application and they're really looking at programming that appeals to tourists year-round, they're also promoting the arts and the museum, of course, is promoting historic preservation. And so we felt that we needed to separate the city's funding process. And so this is what we're going to talk about right now, is that proposal. The reasoning behind it, I mentioned briefly, the council last year established focused areas, making sure that we maintain our uniquely Bassdrop feel, focus on economic vitality of the community and that we're fiscally responsible. And we adopted a work plan this year, and several of those items specifically stated a redesign of the hotel occupancy tax funding process. And our comprehensive plan also specifically gives some targets that relate to what we're trying to accomplish with this proposal. Dale mentioned it earlier, is just because it's a legal use of hot doesn't necessarily mean it's the best use of hotel occupancy tax. And so I think it's really important that both the city and Visit Bassdrop use strategic decision-making. We have to make sure that we leverage the hotel occupancy tax that we do have to the greatest extent to attract tourism and strengthen our sales tax base. And that was specifically addressed in the city manager's budget that she presented this year. The proposed policy that we're talking about, and I passed out copies of both, this is the hotel occupancy tax fund disbursement policy for the city that would replace our current policy. And so it does not include an application, it's just an overview of how the city disperses its funds. It replaces all of our old policy. It aligns with chapter 351, which is the Texas government code pertaining to the proper allocation of hotel occupancy tax, designed to leverage our city's investment. And it pertains to any outside funding of the hotel occupancy tax fund that the city does. So does not include, though, Visit Bassdrop, that's a contractual relationship, the Main Street program, Bassdrop Art in Public Places, the Convention Center, those are all, you know, internal processes that we fund. We are proposing that this policy replace the special event funding program and the contractual agreement with the Visitor Center. So this is just the title we used, and I understand that there's been some confusion about what is an essential tourism asset. So it's actually defined in that policy. But it established procedures for those assets, those things that are attractive for tourists to come and see year-round. They're not special event-based. It's something that they can come in town and go to the car show and on Sunday afternoon they can catch a matinee at the Opera House.
Can I ask a question? Can we go back one slide?
Yep.
Replaces special event funding program, contractual agreement with Visitor Center. What does that mean? Contractual agreement with Visitor-
So, previously, the city's hot funding process, and you can look at the current forms that we've used, it was a special event funding form. And that's when I talked earlier that it didn't work well for these cultural arts organizations and the historic preservation organization because it didn't allow them to plan for programming year-round. So when I say special event funding program, that's that annual allocation of funding that the city has done for many years. For several years, and I'm not sure when it began, the city established a contractual relationship with the Visitor Center, similar to Visit Bassdrop. Last year, we made some minor changes to the funding and we actually merged the Visitor Center contract and the museum contract together. And so we would move those together over into this tourism asset program so that they're not having to count apples and worry about what the museum's doing and what the Visitor Center is.
I just read, I read that as if the special events funding and the Visitor Center contract would be falling on us.
No, no, not at all. This policy that you have in front of you states specifically that Visit Bassdrop will handle special event funding and that we will handle all of these as an essential tourism asset, or whatever the council decides to call it if they choose to move forward on this. Yes. This past summer, we actually did a complete revamp to the contractual agreements for all of the hot funding applications or special event funding that really laid out and established some accountability, some better reporting requirements, really emphasized the need for them to partner with Visit Bassdrop and submit their events online. And so our new tourism asset program would do the same, only- And so our new tourism asset program would do the same, only greater. We want to be able to have a product that Visit Bashrop can market year-round, and the Opera House, and the museum, and the Visitor Center, they need to provide their programming well in advance, so when Visit Bashrop is planning their marketing plan and their social media calendar, and you're working, you know, a month, or two, or three months out, you know what's coming. It also requires any organization that the council would deem to fit in this category to present to council on a quarterly basis, so the public would be aware of what they're doing. And so I think it provides a greater level of accountability and transparency to the public and to council. So, this is just my proposed notes that we did several, I guess, a month or two ago, but it's, what we're proposing this year is that fiscal year 18, it was about $75,000 that the city funded in specific special event funding through the funding application process. We took out the funding for those organizations that we believe would fit into the tourism asset category. You guys would develop the policy in the application process, and as I stated earlier before I got started with this, is that you guys are just better equipped to be able to attract the room nights, to work with the event organizers, and I think that you guys will be able to provide a stronger accountability to those special event groups. So just, as an overview, just because events are eligible for hot, and that they may contribute to our heritage and sense of community, doesn't necessarily mean that they should be funded directly from hot. So is it hot or not? We are proposing, and I know the council wants to have some more discussion, we know the importance and value the importance of both the Bashrop Homecoming and the Juneteenth celebration, and we strongly believe that instead of having them apply to Visit Bashrop on an annual basis for special event hot funding, that they should be funded out of a different, and I included a copy of this application that I've drafted, it's a draft, it's the 2019 Special Event Funding for Community Events. And so this would allow the Homecoming and Juneteenth and any other event that the council believes is an important asset to the community to apply and be funded out of Bashrop Power and Light excess revenue. So it would be different than the special event funding that has gone to certain nonprofits to provide services to the community, because it's an event, and we want to be able to still market it and promote it, and so we require a little bit different type of information from them.
Okay, then hang on. So if I, and I meant to bring it with me, and I didn't, if I look at our fiscal year budget, there is one, actually, Hot Funds is not in my budget book, is it? We approve the Hot Funds later, so we have, I have a piece of paper that says Hot Funds from last year, that's a summary that council approved that Hot Fund the way it was divvied up. We're now talking about going from that one piece of paper to essential tourism assets, whatever we call it, if we do, that's a category, that's a bucket. A bucket of money that we would give to Visit Bashrop that they just presented would be, you could ask for anytime, anytime being hopefully 90 days before your event, and this is a third category, and it's, it is also a special event, but it's not out of Hot Funds, it's out of BP&L, but you're clarifying that that's different than the community support.
Yes, and I'm gonna clarify it even more, so we don't have a meltdown tomorrow. The two events that are going to be suggested or recommended to come from BP&L have historical significance to this community. Juneteenth has been a festival in this town for 32 years. It's gonna continue to be an important part of our fabric. The Bashrop Homecoming has celebrated its 60th anniversary last year, so this is 61. So the sheer numbers of how long they have been alive suggest they're important to this community. And so the conversation council's gonna have, and part of the question as to where they're funded, is if either of these don't make the necessary documentation to fit hot, are you not gonna fund them? And I think 31 years' investment in Juneteenth and 60 years in Homecoming suggests we're probably gonna fund them. So we ought to fund them from a source where it makes sense, and we're not having to politically put in play the things that are historically relevant. So we are not creating a third category of events. There are two that exist today that we're gonna move and take off the table if council sees fit to do that, because of the historical significance. If you are a new event that you want community funding for, that is Visit Bashrop's job. So I don't want us to be confused.
So what I'm confused about is then, why do we have a four-page application for only two events?
I take full responsibility for this. After the last meeting that we had and discussed Hot Funds, there was discussion on the dais and the community about, you know, what, how would that process work? We had no intention of opening it up, but just to provide us as staff the information needed, there may come a time, you know, last year, Homecoming got $20,000. Well, if they're expanding their event, and they're going to be asking for more money, we wanted a process in place, and so I apologize, that we do not, and this is a process in place, so we know what requests that they're making, and you guys can evaluate that request based on the information we've been given.
And then I have a question for Councilmember Peterson, and that is, the car show associated with Juneteenth, is that, is that together, is that not together? Because when I was driving around last weekend, the car show was a phenomenal success, and I'm unclear as to whether or not you're a part of Juneteenth.
We considered the car show a part of the Juneteenth, we just have not separated them out.
But, but I'm asking him a specific question, which is, did you get a portion of the funding from Juneteenth to support the car show?
No, the car show requested separate funds to put the car show, and we got it. But the upcoming year, we're gonna build a relationship to where we can go to the Community Center, excuse me, the Convention Center, and have a individual, everything for Juneteenth and the car show will be combined.
So that it may be combined into one event moving forward?
Yes.
And so, okay, so, but we're still talking about, there's now, potentially, if we agree to this, there is an essential tourism asset that, to me, the clearest definition is it's the difference between programming and an event eligible for hot funds, and so there's a bucket of money that council would control that would be for programmed, and the essential tourism asset's what it's being called now, and then another bucket of money that we would give to Visit Bashrop, where there's not a deadline of if you didn't know by June 19th, then you can't get those hot funds, you just have to be 90 days before you're doing something.
Correct.
And it lasts as long as it lasts, and it goes through the lens and the accountability of Visit Bashrop of, is this a good leveraged way to be spent? So, counts, if I, and I'm sorry for the questions.
I have one question, Connie.
Hang on, so we would give them the $75,000, and then it's their responsibility to spend that $75,000, and if they run out, then those people, too bad, so sad? And so we wouldn't be approving, we council wouldn't be approving the events, we council would be approving, giving $75,000 to Visit Bashrop?
As a part of the $1.4 million, they receive money to invest in marketing. They have chosen to narrow their target to special event funding. So they have money for special events. What we're gonna do in good faith is give them the $75,000 that we've been spending on a special set of special events, and say, you get those and what you were doing, and here's the money to do that with, so it doesn't impact their strategic planning. And if you've got a special event, you get to go to Visit Bashrop. If we keep the essential tourism assets, because they're not interested in it, then those would be identified annually by council, there would be a process for them to go through, and that's all the hot money we would allocate. Does that make sense?
Yes, and Sean, you said you had a question.
And that's my question, who determines what an essential tourism asset is, number one? And number two, does that mean that Visit Bashrop would have the lion's share of having to fund Lost Pines Christmas? Those big special events that this year--
Those are city sanctioned events at this point with Main Street, are they not?
But who determines, somebody comes to us and says, we have this brilliant idea, we're gonna have aerial airboat rides, and that's a special event, and that's a Visit Bashrop problem, opportunity, but it turns into an essential tourism asset.
Okay, so let's talk about that.
It's defined in here, an essential tourism asset is an organization that provides cultural or heritage programming and enrichment opportunities, including museums, art galleries, or performance venues located inside the city of Bashrop. The Bashrop City Council will annually adopt a list of current essential tourism assets, or whatever we decide to call them, during the budget adoption process. Last year, the city funded $25,000 roughly to Tough Mudder. When Visit Bashrop was established, we allowed Visit Bashrop to work with them. So they're gonna be getting that $25,000, whether they choose to give it to Tough Mudder or not is their decision, because they were able to evaluate if that was a good investment of the city's money. Visit Bashrop also allocated money to secure the Bashrop Music Festival. That came out of Visit Bashrop's operating budget, not the, not the city's hot fund. And so it'll be up to you guys as a board as to what organizations and what, what organizations that are hosting special events that you want to fund.
Is the money incremental, is the $75,000 incremental to what it's currently, Visit Bashrop is currently expected to fund?
Correct, it's on top of it.
So you'll get the 50% per contract, and we'll add $75,000 to it.
And it'll-- I made this point this morning, though, you know, Visit Bashrop people are not elected. Y'all are, and I didn't remember ever being in a, in a place where Visit Bashrop was going to have to make the decisions about what were considered essential or not essential.
And they're not.
That's covered, is what you're saying, it's very clear. They'll go through that every year, they'll decide, and then we get what's left, plus $75,000.
And this $75,000 is gonna be a completely separate bucket from our budget, and it'll be, you know, a finite amount that we use for these types of things, and so--
As long as it was those types of things, I'm just a little bit concerned about the blurriness.
So to make this even more complicated, this is an interim until the Cultural Arts Master Plan is published. And then there will be way more less squishy, we hope, to do that, because the point, as y'all know in the comp plan, and the reason council funded it last year is so we don't have these awkward conversations, that we have something that we leverage the hot funds against. The intent to just simplify community asset is the things that offer programming that are consistent, so that when you come to town, there's something to do. So this year, the Bashrop Opera House offered an entire season of programming. The museum has a room that they are now changing out once a month, so even if you've been to the museum, there's something new and exciting, and they do that in correspondence or in conjunction with the First Friday Art Walk. And so what we were looking for is to, that casual traveler that wants to come for a weekend, and there isn't the car show, there isn't the music festival, that there are, it may not be what brought you here, but it sure is what keeps you here. So I tell them, we're gonna go eat at the Chop House on Friday nights, Saturday morning, we're going to the museum, Saturday afternoon, we're gonna go shopping, Saturday evening, we're eating at Papa's, Saturday night, we're going to the Opera House, we're gonna get up the next morning and have breakfast at Maxine's. You know, so there's always these things that, no one something brought you here, but a collection of all of that kept you here.
But, for instance, the Historical Homes Tour, that is a function of the Historical Society, which in turn is aligned with the museum, which, so heretofore, it would have been considered for Visit Bashrop to assist in promoting that particular event. Is that an event, or is that an essential tourism asset?
We're going to allow the, the assets that are defined by council will submit what their programming and what they're going to do that year. We're not planning on marketing, that's y'all's job, you're our destination marketing organization, so it'll be up to you to market whether they're hosting a special event or they're hosting an exhibit opening. However you guys decide to do that is your call. We're funding to allow them the opportunity to host that type of programming, not to market it.
That's, that's a good question, Sean, because, and it's covered by how it's been going on the last couple of years, hasn't it? Hasn't that been included in the contract?
Correct, yes.
All of that, so when you give them a chunk of money, that's included in that chunk of money you give them, and you don't come over here and ask for more money for whatever, right?
That's right, just like the Opera House covers the performances that they do.
I'd like to propose something and cut to what I hope is the chase. We don't have the Cultural Arts Master Plan, but we're gonna. Rather than going through this document and approving this document, it would seem to me what would be appropriate this year in the budget is, say, Museum Center and Visitor Center, make your request known to council. Bashrop Opera House, make your request known to council. And we decide how much money they get, and all of those other presentations that we normally have, asking for hot funds, that's the single event, and those go to you guys. And Sean, it's because you guys are, the whole point of spending that hot fund money is to put heads in beds and leverage it and make it better for the future. And if you guys aren't the experts, and you want us to make those decisions, then why are you guys here?
This was not part of the deal early on, this is just a different approach, it's something we all have to understand, that which parameters are gonna apply. There are those that would make a very strong argument for just exactly what you said, that we should get all the money. You know, I mean, we've already gone through this, five years of these kinds of arguments about DMOs. So I just wanna make sure I clearly understand where the buckets are and what goes into them, and what we're saying is, it's squishy right now, we're not sure until we have all the--
And so that's why I'm--
The I's crossed and the T's dotted, but in the interim, I just wanna know what Visit Bashrop's gonna be responsible for, so.
So that, and I know we don't--
If it's a special event, you're in charge of it.
Yes. So council, you can think about that, we're not voting on anything tonight, but that, it, this, to me, is a document that's trying to take care of potential things that can happen in the future. The reality is, where it's gonna be a different picture this time next year, we'll have the Cultural Arts Master Plan, we'll have some other things, so let's not make it more complicated than it needs to be, and--
I do wanna offer one clarification, so everybody understands the premise of what we were trying to accomplish. There are, and let's use the Bashrop Opera House, there are a number of plays that perhaps they would like to bring to town. But if somebody already has the rights for them, then you have to get on a list. Well, they can't get on a list if they don't have some understanding of year-to-year how much funding they're gonna get. And so every year, there's always this political give and take, so they aren't comfortable stepping out there and signing up for something. So it's an opportunity we miss out on that may be a great thing to really leverage as that cultural tourist event. So what we were trying to do was to figure out a way so that there were some assurances that they had standardized money, so they felt comfortable two years, three years out, signing up for that play, that doesn't change the level of accountability that they owe the council every year as to how you spent the money, just like y'all sit here tonight and provide your accountability so that we can move forward. So I think the mayor's spot on, we can postpone this, but I want the, the community listening and for y'all to understand what the real intent between, behind us keeping that and y'all taking the special events is just organizational planning.
It's a great idea, and addressing this long-term issue of historical significance, important programs. I mean, we've all laughed about the fact that Homecoming, everybody stays at Mama and Em's house. They don't stay in the hotels and motels, they just don't, you know? So I think that piece of it is particularly significant.
But Sean, the, the very fact that you said that, not everybody agrees with that. There's other people that say they don't stay with Mama and Dad, and they stay, there are people that, and we're just tired of having the conversation.
Right, right, exactly, exactly, but that's the point. It's a, if it's that questionable, it needs to be in its own bucket. I just was concerned, sitting in this chair, I wanna know what's in my bucket, so, thank you.
So we've added things to the bucket, we've given you money for that bucket, but mainly it's to leverage the expertise that you have, they, and particularly, I like the idea, because if they stay in our bucket, they have one shot. They have to know by a certain time if they're gonna be in an event, because the budget's set. If, if you guys are running it to where they only have to know 90 days out, that's already, in my opinion, made it a little more-- in my opinion, made it a little more desirable for someone who may not know on June 15th to get the deadline in. Councilmember, isn't it?
And from our vantage point, we don't know whether a special event that y'all may look at is going to fit in your master plan. We just look at it and go, oh, it's Joe Blow and he has a good idea and we're going to give him $10,000. Where y'all look at it and see it fits into what your whole plan is and you're on ground zero and we're not.
Okay, so, did we get through, Mr. Lockett, are you happy?
Yes.
Well, happy may not be a, have we completed all of the information, gone over everything you wanted to?
I think the only thing that needs to be added is that the process for applications, the staff will process and will compile the applications. It will be a board decision on allocation.
Particularly Sean Plech, I want that on the record. She'll bring it back on that.
Thank you, Sean. But he raises a good point. You have staff vetting the applications, providing their report to the board for them to provide any input and to digest that information and make that well-informed decision. And that's, that's what we're attempting to accomplish here. I would much rather be a professional staff member than making those decisions or vetting those applications than a bunch of us political hacks sitting at their goal. Okay.
Okay. And so you guys will have a process and we have confidence you'll do great. Clint, do you have anything else for your board?
No.
Is this possibly the longest board meeting you've ever had in the history of board meetings?
Since we never adjourned today, yes.
Yes, okay. Council, do you have any other questions? City staff, have you gotten enough direction, you know where to go? Councilmember Jones, were you going to say something?
Just moved to adjourn.
Okay, by acclamation, it is way too late, 10:13, and we are adjourned. City council's adjourned?
Motion to adjourn? We adjourn.
Thank you guys very, 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 very much. Long, hard day. Thank you.